Thank you. You want some more?
Oh, thanks.
All right. We are now ready to begin our normally scheduled meeting that starts at 7:00. And we start these with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you would rise, we'll do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is, excuse me, changes to the order of the agenda. And I believe we do have one requested. Mr. Vice Mayor, you had a request for a change to the order?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I request that we, in the change to the order of the agenda, that we move item 8A to right before 7:00. In other words, do even before the solid waste of discussion.
For the public hearings.
Right, before the public hearings. Have the update on East Side Connect Project, then go to item 8A.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Will do.
Thanks.
Any other changes? Next is Council Communications and Announcements. Do we have any?
The only announcement I have is that this coming Sunday, the Friends of the Library will be having their annual, their annual, monthly, their monthly book sale over on the second floor of the library. They have about 15,000 gently-used books that will be available for your holiday reading. That will be from 1:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon.
This Saturday, is it?
The Sunday.
The Sunday.
The Sunday.
On Sunday. I've bought books there before. It's a pretty good, pretty good deal. Good time of year to have it. Any other announcements? Or things you want to share?
Just wanted to mention that Councilperson Clapper and Councilmember Grisilli and myself went or attended an Arbor Day tree planting at Burton Park on Saturday. It was attended by Mike Keller, who is the, I believe, the Director of the Youth Center, and four or five members of the Youth Advisory Council. So it's nice to see those young people out there on a Saturday morning when I'm sure they'd probably rather be doing homework.[162.56][162.56](Laughter). But it was, it was very nice, a nice addition to the, to the children's play area there at Burton Park.
Very good. And down here?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make a mention of a letter that we received, and I think everyone on the dais received it, from Alicia Giree, the Mayor of Redwood City, relative to information about perhaps setting up a Blue Ribbon Task Force to look at items in South Bayside Waste Management Authority. And I would ask that we have staff look at this and perhaps agendize this for one of the next couple of meetings to discuss on the dais whether we want to participate or not in this, if that's appropriate.
It is by my estimation. Do we have a consensus on that?
We'll just see.
Very good. Okay. Staff will take note of that. In similar fashion, I wanted to let the council know that I had a discussion with the city manager after the, all those little hockey pucks went in on Laurel Street. I feel like my sound is going in and out. Maybe it's me. All the little hockey pucks went in on Laurel Street to, in order for an application to work on an iPhone, I think it is, or any kind of smartphone, that'll let you know if there's an open parking space. And that came through a grant that we received through Cisco, I believe it was. Cisco gave us a grant to install Wi-Fi in the downtown. So for me, it was a surprise, the construction had started. I was sitting at my normal spot at the plantation on, on one morning, and all this construction going on, and folks asking me what's, what's happening. And I said, "I don't know." And they said, "You're the mayor. You should know."[272.33][272.33](Laughter). So I went over and asked one of the fellows. He told me what, what was happening. But my point is this, that when I spoke to Mr. Malpe about it, I said, "We should probably have some kind of policy that, it would be similar to when we spend money." In this case, we're not spending money. We're getting a grant. But still, something's happening on behalf of the city. And whether or not money's being spent that's coming out of the general fund, it, it impacts things. And in this case, it could impact future policy about parking and parking meters and so forth. So I've asked him to bring something to us to look at this kind of issue for the future and to have it on the agenda for us to discuss.
Can I just clarify?
Yeah.
So the, the question is about the grant for the Cisco wireless or the fact that this other company was installing the system to work off of the Cisco wireless?
Well, really, either. It's, it's more looking at a general policy issue that if, if the city's going to receive grant money, and it's going to have a certain threshold of expense, and the project could affect future council policy that we may intend to set or not set, that those kind of things be brought to the council for approval, even though it's free, but still, it has an impact on things.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Sure. So if, if the council's pleased to have that on the dais, we plan to bring it. Okay. Very good. That brings us to item 4, which is public comment for any members of the public who are of age to speak to us, other than the one that's leaving right now. He had something to say, but I'm not sure what it was about. So if, if you have something you'd like to say to the council right now, it's not on the posted agenda, but you just want to share something, a concern, or, or something of that nature, now's the time to do it.
Yeah.
And I do have a card. Thank you. Because I have all these cards, and I would've lost that one in this lunch.
Laura Finicky.
So we have Laura Finicky, Finuki, Finuki, I'm sorry, would like to talk to us about something. And there she is.
Good evening, Mayor. Good morning, members of the council and city staff. My name's Laura Finicky. I'm the Associate Director of Hip Housing, and I'm here bearing gifts tonight of our Hip Housing 2013 calendar. This is the 12th year that Hip Housing has been putting on our calendar contest to ask students kindergarten through 5th grade to draw a picture of their home and then write a statement about what their home means to them. It's really an outreach tool for our organization to reach out to the community, to educate them about our affordable housing programs. And we can't make our programs happen without support, and your support here in the city of San Carlos has meant a tremendous difference to our organization. We've been partners for over 20 years. And we just wanted to say thank you for all your support. I hope that you enjoy the calendars during the year, and I wish you all a wonderful, happy, and holiday season, and a peaceful 2013. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to the Consent Calendar, I believe, item 5. And so approval of the Consent Calendar is done as though all these things are in a basket, and we're approving a basket, unless somebody wants to pull something out of the basket and consider it separately. So any items that anyone wants to talk about separately?
Mr. Mayor, if one were to ask for an item to be pulled and considered separately, at what point in the meeting would we do it?
I think tonight, we'll, if it's something that would be fairly brief, we'll just go ahead and do it right now.
Okay. In that case, I'd like to ask that we pull item D, 5D.
You're thinking the same way I'm thinking. Okay. Very good. Item D has been pulled. Any other items? Anyone from the public care to pull something? Okay. So in that case, I would, I would like to entertain a motion for items 5A through C and E through G.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve items 5A through C and E through G.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. All right. And item D.
Yes. I'd like to move approval of item D, reappointing Betsy Schneider as the city's representative of San Mateo County Mosquito Abatement District to a two-year term ending December 2014.
Well, I'll second that.
And I just, the reason I actually asked to pull it is, I just wanted to thank Betsy for all the work she's done on behalf of not only our own community, but other communities that are affected by the mosquito abatement district. And I know it's been difficult on occasion, and I'm glad she was as stalwart as she was. And reward for good service is to be thrown back into the melee again. So thank you very much, and look forward to your continued support.
Well stated, from all five of us. Thank you. All right. Do we, we need a motion?
We need a motion. I mean, we need a vote.
We need a vote.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. All right. Before we go any further, I've got all these speaker cards, and some of them, I'm wondering if folks are looking at something different than I am.
Probably looking at the first, they're probably looking at the first.
Yeah, because, okay, so.
First agenda.
Folks who put on their cards, item, Agenda Item 3, or 3A and 3B, like Mr. Crabtree, you're talking about the Transit Village, just so I know how to operate up here. Very good. All right. Just wanted to clear that up. Okay. Next item is item 8A.
6, let's do the 6.
Excuse me?
Reports to council.
Ah. Sorry.
Sorry.
See what happens when we change the order of the agenda. Reports to council, item 6. And I think we have an update, don't we, on the?
East Side Connect?
East Side Connect Project? Yeah.
And the winner is?
Who's going to do that for us?
We have a report.
Oh, John Hoffman's here. He, oh.
Ah, we're missing a staff member.
Oh, we are.
Well, maybe we, should we need to find her? Why don't we, why don't we look for our missing staff member?
Okay.
And.
We'll take up item 8A then.
Take 8A.
We're right. See? You're right anyway.
That's right.
It's destiny. They're all over it. These cards, where are those?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Jeff Malpe, city manager. The item before you this evening is the annual contract between the city and the city attorney, Greg Rubens. Mr. Rubens was recently given his annual performance evaluation by the council. During and following that process, the council and Mr. Rubens reached a tentative agreement on what a contract would look like for city attorney services for the coming year. Those changes to the contract would include a 2% increase in the monthly retainer, which is currently $10,000 per month. That retainer would increase to $10,200 per month, and a 2% increase in the hourly charges for special projects or litigation services, which would raise the hourly rate from $230 per hour to $235 per hour. In my experience, these costs and these increases are, one, very much in line with what has been granted by the city council to other city employees in the last year. The overall cost for legal services in this city compared to other jurisdictions tends to be at or below average, in my estimation. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about the item before you. Our city attorney is also here if you have any specific questions about city attorney services.
All right. Any questions for staff? Okay. Thank you very much. Any discussion on the item, or?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2012-dash.
81.
81. Resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos, amending contract for personal services, city attorney.
Second. Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay. Did we find that staff person? There she is. Your retirement hasn't arrived yet.
No.[825.73][825.73](Laughter).
Mayor and council members, I am the project manager heretofore on this project, and will be transferring it to our Public Works Department as we move into construction. It's pretty exciting. We're really, really close, even though it's been about a year since you saw this last. So just as a reminder, this is the longer version, isn't it? Sorry. I want the shorter version. I'll speed through this because, yeah, all right. This is the plan overview. It is Old County Road and East San Carlos Avenue. It's a bike boulevard from Belmont to Redwood City. It's an undergrounding project adjacent to the residential neighborhoods, which you saw last January. And we have been working with PG&E in the interim. They, their engineers have to do their own design. We have a design subconsultant on our team, and they have their own designers, and we've just met with them. It's very, very close. There will be letters going out within the next couple of weeks to the properties that face, and they're primarily commercial properties, that face the Underground District for this length regarding conversions. Most of the residential properties, at least on the south side, do not face Old County Road. Those on the north side have some backyard poles, and there will have to be easements to do new risers. I'm, I'm sorry, this is the wrong version of it, so I'm going to go through quickly. In March, we got approval from Caltrans for our environmental document and the design, and woo-hoo! Just this month, Union Pacific gave us the okay to remove the tracks, and that has been long, long awaited by the residents and the bicycle community in particular. As I said, we'll be, we have ongoing PG&E coordination, and the bid package is in progress. You should see it in January. Yes, sir?
You, when you say remove the tracks, you're talking about the shoe fly tracks that cross the road and so forth?
Tracks in the road, not the spur itself that comes down.
Okay.
Tracks in the road.
Good.
Yeah, yeah. It's very good news. The existing condition of the road has telephone poles, as you know, in the sidewalk. We will be doing landscape design that replaces all of these sidewalks, undergrounds those, adds trees, and makes the corners bulbed out with new crosswalks, safer for residents. This is the planned view of that. At Holly, we also make some changes to these turning movements and to provide for the bikes to safely cross. There will be bike lanes added. The medians will be striped and changed. There'll be these bike boxes where the bikes can stop safely on either side. And again, we're going to reconfigure these corners. If you've ever walked there, you kind of have to walk sideways when you cross the street to get around all the facilities that are there. At our entrance to Arroyo Park, there'll be a new landscape area with signage, so, and a dedicated left turn pocket. So there's actually an announcement that you have arrived at the park, and that will be a great improvement. The Old County Road, East San Carlos, is a place where there's all kinds of transportation needs coming together. Right now, there is a pocket that's indented here. The taxis park there. We're going to move the taxis to the west side. This area actually will be bulbed out slightly with new pavement on the sidewalk, such that that's safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. And there will be a, the creation then of a place for these shuttles. There's four shuttles. Three of them actually have a transit route that goes from Hillsdale to various stations, down to San Carlos, and then out to Redwood Shores. And these are advertised by Caltrain with maps, and it's a very tight schedule. We are accommodating those in this plan to stay on the east side. There is one of those shuttle services called the Clipper that will stay on the west side in the, in the new multimodal transit center, should that get redesigned. The taxis will also be over on the west side. This graphic shows this bumped-out area. This is where the shuttles can pull up. This is existing parking that occurs north of, or south of East San Carlos Avenue, and that will remain. That's the view. So this is bicyclists, number of them go, as in that previous picture, they go up East San Carlos Avenue, and then they go to Industrial and off to Employment Centers. This will be made a safer travel route for them by making it a bike boulevard. There also will be, we didn't have enough money to underground this street, but we will do new sidewalks, including in this area where there are, there are currently no place for people to walk. And this is the planned view, showing trees and new sidewalks and parking bays in various places. And there'll also be some improvements, at least, to the pavement at Industrial to make that safer, though no traffic light. Here's our walk audit when we were looking at that spur. That's now going to be gone, as shown in that graphic. The other place where there's a lot of attention on this is the Arroyo Undercrossing. This is the commercial avenue side. We'll straighten out that crosswalk, moving it from here to the north side. Again, this is looking back towards commercial and creating a broader, safer sidewalk for people to stand in, a crossing that's more directed. It'll also have the bike boulevard area and places for bikes to do their turning movements, as well as a pedestrian and bike-initiated crossing signal. And these are the materials that have been chosen, and that was with input from various public meetings throughout last summer. We have, in, in discussions with the east side residents, we're changing the street trees to an evergreen tree. It still will be broadleaf, but it will be an evergreen tree to help with the masking of a potential Transit Village project, should you approve one in the future. So where we are right now is creating these plans for construction, which will come to you in January. Hopefully, you'll be able to award a bid in February, and then it's about a nine-month to a year process to include also the Underground District. The Underground District will be a separate bidding project because it's not grant-related. So hopefully by spring. I also wanted to show how this relates to the El Camino Real Landscape Project, which you'll also be seeing in January. This is an old grant. It's been around for a few years, but it does have landscape and lighting from Bush Street to Arroyo. You approved this a couple of years ago. These are the standards for that project, and these are the standards that you've adopted for any other improvements on El Camino Real. We're also looking at, and I heard some conversation about applying for grants, but we have a grant right now to look at this strip of El Camino and these two intersections. It's a design grant. There is now a call for projects for some construction money, and we will be looking at, look, construction for that node, which is, this is its lovely existing condition, which is how you get to the Arroyo Underground Undercrossing from the El Camino side. This is the Arroyo Undercrossing from the El Camino side. And this is just a graphic of what those improvements might be, a plaza and street trees, and a new median on El Camino, also lighting. So those are, those are our projects underway, and hopefully, construction will have a prettier El Camino real soon.
Very good.
And a prettier Old County Road.
Very good. This is informational only, but if anybody has any comments or questions, now's time.
I had a quick question.
Yes.
Deborah, could you go back to the slide that you said you were going to put a sidewalk in?
A sidewalk?
Along, along, it was, it was one of the side streets.
Oh, East San Carlos, yeah.
There was a bunch of cars and trucks parked there, and I just.
Yeah. It's kind of a rolled curb, actually.
Right there.
It is right there. Yeah, in the middle, the center, in the center, to the center-left.
Yeah, this is the picture.
Yeah, could you? Okay.
That's the picture.
So you're going to put a sidewalk on the right-hand side? My right?
Right-hand side, it'll be, yes, a rolled curb.
Where are those cars going to park?
Those cars are going to, because it's a rolled curb, they're going to park just like they do right now.
So they're fine?
Perpendicular.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because otherwise, I just want to make sure that they knew they were going to lose the parking.
What we're going to do is visually make it safer for people to walk behind those cars.
No problem. I just thought if, if we were going to take away the.
No, parking is an issue there.
I understand. I just thought I'd ask the question. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
Okay.
You have a couple other questions up here. Karen, go ahead.
You mentioned the taxis and the, and the shuttles. And which category would limos be put in? How will they be treated?
Limosines are the same, cars for hire. They, I believe, fall under the same part of the code as the taxis.
As the taxis, okay.
They're regulated by us.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
One question I had. You mentioned that the shuttles were still going to come down the east side?
Yes. So the shuttles, there, there was input about the shuttles not following the route that's on the map. Now, there are Caltrain maps for all of these routes. What happens with those taxis filling up where they pull over? Sometimes the shuttles cannot pull over until past San Carlos Avenue. They are told to go down, if that happens, to go down and use a commercial street. We've had conversations with the Samtrans folks who say that in that case, it's a call to them. They counsel the driver, but the route is established as East San Carlos Avenue. And with these changes, we believe that puts them on the north side of East San Carlos Avenue, so, and because the intersection will be better signaled, they turn left onto East San Carlos and go back to Industrial and out to Redwood Shores.
And has that route, when departing the station, been different than that until now?
No, it has not.
Always gone down East San Carlos Avenue?
Yes. That, that's its scheduled route.
All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? I just had one, and I was curious, in one of the pictures you showed of things that had been approved, amenities, and it showed a trash can that I think we've decided in the downtown, we were going to get rid of those because they, yeah, that one there.
Yeah. So you, you approved a new standard, and we'll change that out.
You'll change that out. So that's just an old photo.
Yes.
Right. Okay. All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Oh, cool. Wow.
That's because it's on the east side, I'm sure.[1628.63][1628.63](Laughter).
Is that like your swan? Is that like your swan song? You get a round of applause. That's pretty cool.
That's right. Yeah. And by the way, Mr. City Manager?
We have a resident who'd like to speak on this item.
On this item? Okay.
It's just an agenda.
Sure. Okay. And while he's coming to the mic, I was, just wanted to ask the city manager, when exactly is Deborah retiring? Soon. I know.
A week?
A week? So.
Yeah, she did.[1663.33][1663.33](Laughter).
So this is an opportunity, this is an opportunity, Deborah's been with the city for, for quite some time, serving us, and why don't we just give her a little bit of a round of applause for her service?[1674.41][1674.41](Applause). She can watch it on film. All right. Go ahead.
Yeah. It's actually, I had a few questions for Deborah. There were two things. I was on the advisory committee for the East Side Connect Project. Everyone in East San Carlos is very happy to see it, see it occur. I, I was looking for some clarification on the crossing on Industrial and East San Carlos Avenue. There's, there's a whole slew of, you know, workout places and stuff like that there. There's lots of kids crossing there now, and it's creating some, some really unsafe conditions. So I thought I heard Deborah say that there wasn't going to be a light at that intersection. Deborah, do you know, is, is there going to be a light at Industrial and East San Carlos? I thought I heard you say that there wasn't. I wanted to.
No, there will not.
There will not, okay. Yeah, so I think that that's a pretty serious omission, because we want to, since we are trying to encourage pedestrian access, we want to make sure that people can cross safely. This is something that my wife has been bringing up to me constantly. She sees this happen all the time. She sees kids running across the street to go, you know, to the gyms. So I would, you know, ask the council to consider that as a change and improvement to the plan. And I'll speak about the shuttles in my Transit Village.
Very good. I've made a note of it on your card, which will go to the city clerk, and we'll take, so we'll get it in the record.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
I seem to remember that there was a pedestrian light there sometime back in the late 80s or early 90s, and it wasn't there very long, and all of a sudden, it was taken out. I never knew why. It was right there at Industrial and either East San Carlos, or maybe a half a block south, or half a block north. Anybody else remember that besides me?
I'm wrong.
Okay, I'm not crazy then.
I could speak too. We did look at a plan that has a light, and it was taken out in a value engineering because we weren't going to meet the cost of the project, and that was one where the level, the traffic study showed that although it's a wide street, and it would certainly benefit from a pedestrian signal, that a fully signaledized intersection, we could not afford. But I, and I may have misspoke on that, I can get that information back to you.
Well, and I suppose one of the things that we could look at is, I think we've received all the grant funding we're going to receive on this project, but even after the project's completed, we could always look at grant funding for, like through CCAG's BPAC, to get the in-pavement lights that go off, like they have at the Redwood City Library, something of that nature, so you have a pedestrian crossing, but it's not a...
It's not a full stop, but...
Right, it's not a full intersection, but it is a pedestrian crossing.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, just sort of extending that potentially, I wouldn't mind if staff were to spend a little time researching that and then a little look at that alternative. I mean, I'm not opposed to trying to see if we can find money in the future to put a fully signaledized intersection there, if it makes sense to do that. I know there's all sorts of warrants that have to be met. It just seems like something that could be studied and brought back to us.
I agree.
I would agree too, and it could just be a, I don't know if it's a pedestrian activator or if it's a full signalization. As I recall before, it was pedestrian activated. You pushed a button, and the only time it turned red was if you pushed the button.
Yeah.
It was similar to the one that's there on Old County Road.
Yeah.
Near the, near the train depot. So if it's all right with council, I think our Public Works Director is taking notes, and so he's being judicious about this. How about if he gives a report back at some point and lets us know his findings and his recommendations on that?
Okay.
Good enough.
Did you hear the applause, Deborah?
Oh, um...
Let's do it again.
Thank you.
We know you're retiring.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome. It's been a pleasure, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay, you had to do that.
Yeah, I had to do that.
That's right. Okay, that is item six. Next is item seven. We're back in order here. Public hearing on solid waste.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Brian Moore, Assistant City Manager. As the council knows, in October, we reviewed the potential 2013 solid waste rates with you, and we got direction from the council to issue a Prop 213, or 218 notice, to look at both a 12% year-to-year increase for all customers, and also to give you a rate equity option as well. So the 218 notice that we sent out in October is a little different than what we usually do, because rather than sending out specific rates in the residential cart category, we actually sent out maximum rates. And as you'll see by tonight's report, the actual recommendation from staff is considerably lower than what was in that rate announcement. Solid waste rates are basically set each year to cover the cost of providing garbage and recycling, as well as disposal services for all residential and commercial customers in San Carlos. SBWMA, also known as Rethink Waste, reviews the contractor's rate application each year, and then develops an estimated amount of revenue that needs to be raised in the coming year. As we discussed in October, the pieces of the 2013 rate include the year-to-year cost change. It also includes a reconciliation for both 2011 and 2012, where the amount of money actually paid through the rates was less than the estimate, and so we need to reconcile those amounts, plus interest for the contractor. We also have a increase in the so-called unscheduled services, or the attachment queue, as they're called. In terms of the elements of this year's rate increase, as you can see, the majority of it is the year-to-year change, went up 8.8% of those numbers. $662,000 of the increase was due to Recology's compensation. There also was an increase of $40,000 for disposal and processing. That includes Shoreway Center, South Bay Recycling, and SBWMA. And then there was actually a drop in the city costs and fees. It went down by $50,000. And then you see on the other two categories, the true-ups for both 2011, 2012, the amount of the shortfall, plus interest. Attachment queue is also attached, and again, these are added services. The most common ones for people who have attachment queue services are backyard collections, service fees, and additional recycling carts. Based on the year-to-year index, Recology can, or is entitled to receive a 3.25% increase for these services, and that's part of tonight's recommendation. Residential service trends. One of the things that we've noticed, and we've talked with you about, is that we've seen a dramatic move towards the smaller 20- and 32-gallon carts since 2011, when we changed to the higher service levels. In prior years, we attempted to motivate people to trade down by differences in rates, and the needle really didn't move at all. But once we went to weekly services and the food scraps, there were some dramatic changes. A good data point here, and some of you probably remember this, is it wasn't that many years ago, I think it was 2009, where the city was on its second or third compliance letter from the state, because we were not yet at 50%, and today, we're now approaching 70%. So the stepping up of the services has had a dramatic increase in terms of improving the level of recycling and reducing the amount of garbage going to the wastelandfill. But obviously, there's also a problem here, and that is that as people transition to the smaller can sizes, we now have more and more customers who are in accounts that don't cover the real cost of service. And again, as I note, both the food scraps program in 2009, and the weekly recycling and single stream in 2011 are what really drove those changes. This is a table that shows you a comparison between the actual cost of service and the rates. You'll notice that 20- and 32-gallons were somewhere between 30% to 53% below the actual cost of service and the rates we charge. Conversely, at 64- and 96-gallons, we're considerably above the actual cost of service. When we get to 96-gallons, we're 55% above the cost. I think there is some concern, not only in San Carlos, but among other cities in SBWMA, that we need to be careful, we don't get too far above the real cost before there's questions about, you know, abusing one's discretion in setting the rates. You'll also see that today, most customers are at 32-gallons. There was a time, not that many years ago, where most customers were at 64-gallons. So clearly, people are trading down. Some other things to keep in mind as we go forward, and I'm sure you probably heard me say this for several years in a row, but we're now on the verge of the end of the labor pass-throughs. You'll recall that when we, in 2007, we set up the RFP and asked for proposals. It was the original recommendation of staff that we use the index from year one. There's a lot of pushback from the unions and the county labor council about that, and we heard a lot from several agencies, including Redwood City and the county and San Mateo, about not doing that. So the compromise was to pass these costs through for the first several years. And that has had an impact on your rates. As I note in the slide, the average increase on salary for the unions providing these services is over 4%, and the year-to-year average for both pension and health and welfare costs for these employees is well over 8%. This is quite a bit higher, obviously, than the sort of wage increases you're providing at the city. AB 341 was passed and signed a year ago. It sets both mandatory commercial recycling by this past summer, which San Carlos kind of got to jump on, we already have that, but it also sets a 75% recycling goal by 2020. We don't have the regulations yet, so we don't know exactly how that's going to work. In the residential categories, you might imagine, single-family, since we're already approaching 70%, we're probably in pretty good shape. But in the areas of both business, commercial, and multifamily residential, we are not in good shape, as most cities in California are not. And I just wanted to highlight that, because that probably means we're going to have to add additional services and programs in those two categories outside of single-family residential, and that probably means additional costs down the road as we get closer to 2020. It's also worth mentioning that the Ox Mountain landfill, that all, that the, all 12 of the agencies in SBWMA take their garbage to. The agreement to use that facility ends in 2019. We also have very, very low rates at Ox Mountain, so even if it were to be renewed, chances are pretty high, I would guess, that that's going to be a further push rates up. And certainly, the other longer-term question I think staff has concerns about is if Ox fills up at some point, and undoubtedly it will, if we're not able to get a landfill in this county, garbage rates will go up very dramatically, particularly if we have to go outside the county or the Bay Area to find another landfill. This is a comparison of adjustments both last year and this year, shows some trends. Last year, San Carlos had the lowest rate adjustment for agencies that increased, 5.3%. Burlingame had the highest at 25%. And of note here, both Atherton and Hillsborough began to flatten out their rates. Hillsborough did it in one year, which is a lot faster than I think those of us on the staff would imagine ever doing it, but they pretty dramatically overnight fixed that problem. In last year, the council took 3.6% of the rate from last year and moved it over to this year, so that's one of the reasons this year's rate's a little higher. Conversely, as you'll see in this year's chart, actually, several agencies have no rate increase because of the very large increases that they had last year, and conversely, we're now towards the top third in terms of needing a rate increase. You'll see in the packet, and I have some slides to show you the different options that we're recommending that you consider. A 12% rate increase across the board, which also in the rate notice was referred to as option one. And then we have three scenarios that involve anywhere from a minus 3% to a 9% base increase, and then a series of surcharges to begin to bring those 20- and 32-gallon rates a little closer to the actual cost of service. Here's table one, which shows the traditional 12% increase, and you'll see that the dilemma here is that further aggravates the difference between the real cost of service and the amount that's being paid. It moves the 96-gallon folks to 74% over the cost. And again, we're getting a little close to being over the line in terms of using appropriate discretion, I think. In table two, we dial back the base increase to 9% for 20- and 32, and 6% to 8% for the other categories, and add a monthly surcharge. And what we're doing here, by the way, as we are with the other two tables, is we're taking the additional revenue, and we're rebating it back to the 64- and 96-gallon customers, so their rates are actually starting to come down. And as you can see, suddenly now, those subsidies from their neighbors, as it were, are starting to drop. Table three, we're showing a rate break for 64- and 96, there'd be no increase, and a $2- and $3-a-month surcharge, and then there's further reduction in the subsidy. And then finally, in table four, we're actually showing, I think that's a typo, it should say minus 3 and minus 3, we're actually showing further reduction. And again, tonight, I think the council has a couple of key choices. One is to decide whether you're more comfortable with the traditional 12% increase for everyone, and then the other is whether some of these other options that bring a little rate equity to the table are of interest. So the key for, for tonight's action, you need to hold a public hearing for the proposed rates, take any additional comments or protests. The way that 218 notice process works is if there are a majority of parcels in the community that protest the rate, you're not able to move forward. If there is not, the council has the option to move forward. There are 11,077 parcels in San Carlos, so you would need 5,540 protests to not be able to act. Prior to tonight's meeting, you had 72, and I believe the city clerk informed me we got two more before the meeting. And in comparison, last year, we had around 40 protests for the 5.3% increase. And then finally, discuss and act upon the rates. There is a resolution attached that sets the rates. It is based on the staff recommendation. If the council decides to use one of the other options, or an option of your own, we'll need to amend that resolution to reflect your action. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, and after that, I'd encourage you to open the public hearing.
Questions?
Just one. Just doing the math here. It looks to me like our rate this year for a 20-gallon container, that's my size, $17.31 a month, is that right?
That's correct.
And the rate next year, if we were to go with the 12% rate increase, is that, does that mean the 20-gallon rate goes to 1818?
Ron, don't, this is the mayor's proposal, so...
All right, I'm looking at the wrong one.
You're looking at the wrong sheet.
Okay.
Sorry.
The 12% would go to $19.39.
$19.39, thank you, that was...
At 12%, and then the staff recommendation would take it to 2187, these are on page three.
Page three, yeah.
All right, Mayor, thank you. So about, how much, what's the net, about $1.70, is that right?
Correct.
You said 1903?
1939.
1939 at 12%, which is roughly $2.08 a month.
$2.08, thank you, okay.
And then it trends up from there.
Okay.
But again, staff's recommendation is table three, I believe, is that right?
That's correct.
It's table one.
Table one's the 12% increase. We're recommending table three.
Do you have table three?
Yes, yes, we had that. Let's go back to this one. That's table three.
Mr. Moore, you know, from yours and my earlier discussions, we had looked at the current rate structure, and we estimated that on the single-family residential, there's net-net about $86,000 uncovered cost in it. You remember that discussion?
Actually, I looked it up, and I have the exact number, which is $98,494.
I'm going to have to put new batteries in my calculator, I can't imagine I was off that far. Okay. Well, whatever that, let's use your figure. Did you calculate a similar figure for the other alternatives, or do you know roughly offhand what they are?
No, that number is essentially the year-to-year shortfall between the 2012 rates and what we, and the impact of the cart migration. And this was calculated by SBWMA staff this summer, and they do this calculation once a year.
Okay. The reason I was asking is that, for me, because I'm concerned about cross-subsidies and whatnot going on here, I wanted to know whether or not the alternatives were going to aggravate that shortfall or reduce it.
Yeah, and I think the answer is that to the extent that you add the surcharge and start to collapse the rates, I think that's going to improve the situation. Because the problem we're having is as more and more customers move into the rates that aren't covering their costs, we have this annual issue where our revenue does not meet the estimate, and so there's this constant pressure on the rates to, part of the rate increase is always to make up that difference one year later.
So even though, for example, in table three, the, let me call it, the base increase is 9% for the smaller can sizes, the addition of the surcharge offsets the fact that you're not showing increases on the higher-end cans?
Right. What happens is that additional revenue, if we want to call it that, gets moved right back to the 64- and 96-gallon customers, and they end up with a lower increase than they otherwise would get.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to follow up on that. My understanding, when I was looking at these different scenarios, is that net-net, they generated the same amount of...
They do.
Fees.
They do.
Right.
Assuming no one moves, which...
Yeah, right, assuming it's not a moving target.
That's right.
Right. Okay. Other questions?
Mr. Moore, I just did, when I did my calculation, and again, I'm just using the table one.
Yes.
And I basically looked at the negative or positive rate versus cost, that amount.
Right.
And multiplied it times the number of cans, not the, you know, okay, that you showed on one of your other sheets that we got.
Right.
I came up with about $84,000, not $98,000.
No, no, we're comparing two different numbers.
I couldn't understand quite where my colleague was going there.
Two different numbers.
Okay, so basically, but I came up with about $84,000, which turns out to be about $1 million a year.
Well, these rates, well, again, we're taking a portion of the rates. This is roughly equal to 40% of all the revenue for solid waste.
Right.
But the comparison I was giving to Councilmember Olbert earlier was related only to the revenue shortfall related to cart migration.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's not additional, it's just makes it from 84 to 98?
Well, the problem that people trading down, and again, that...
I understand.
Yeah, is that when we come to you each year, and we say, here's how much money we expect to bring in, based on the rates, we assume no one moves.
Right, and that's what this table one is, with the rate versus cost.
Well, table one assumes we do 12% across the board.
Right, but just the rate versus cost column. You're short $84,000 a month.
Right.
No cart migration.
Correct.
If you have cart migration, it's an extra, the way it's explained, maybe I'm missing this, an extra $14,000. this, an extra $14,098, you gave him 98.
Well, again, we're comparing two different sets of numbers.
Okay, I'm still here.
Okay. For illustration, we're showing you the 2012 actual cost versus the 2013 rates.
I understand.
Whereas, the number I gave you earlier was a comparison of 2011 versus 2012 cart migration and the impact that...
The 98 was that?
Correct.
Okay, so, oh, that's fine, I apologize, I missed the years on that, okay?
Yes.
So, all right, that was history, we know what it was, we were able to do 98.
Right.
So we could assume, I mean, only assume, that if the 84 is this, it was gonna go up, it's gonna be higher...
Yes.
Than 84. And it might be 98, or it might be 90, or...
That's correct. To give you a guideline, Vice Mayor Griselli, one of the things that SBWMA staff has suggested for several years running, and I think because the rates have been rather significant, we haven't recommended it to staff, nor have, I don't believe, any of the other cities, is they've suggested that the cities could, you know, factor in another 1 or 2% to the rates to try to tease that out.
Uh-huh.
And that's an option, too.
Again, to go back to my scenario, and again, just humor me if you will, let's just assume there's no cart migration, let's assume these are real numbers, and let's assume that it's 84,000, the number I came up with, which would be a $1 million shortfall. 84 times 12.
Okay.
Believe me, it's close.
Okay.
Trust me. Okay, so, in that, we're trying to raise the, if we raise the rates 12%, just across, on, let's say, number one, or any of the three options, we're gonna raise about $380,000 approximately, $380,000 and change.
Okay. Well, the numbers here, if you take the proposed rates...
Yeah.
And you multiply them by the number of carts, which I think is what you're doing...
Which I've done.
Each of these four tables is designed to raise $295,000 a month, roughly.
Really?
I mean, a year. No, I think it's a month, let me check with my...
It's $31,800.
$31,000 a month.
Yeah.
And I did math, I did it three times.
Me, too.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm not as good at you as I am at math.
It's $31,000 approximately each time, and it goes from 382 to 390, is what it mathematically, trust me.
Okay, well, I guess all I could say, and I'll refer, I have Marshall Moran, who's the SBWMA finance person there...
Well, I apologize for Mr. Moran, but these are the numbers, okay? But regardless of what the numbers are, 300 or 400, my point is, a million dollar shortfall, we're raising 300 or 400,000 in rates.
Mm-hmm.
So we're short 6, 7, 6, 500,000. It's coming out of general fund, coming out of somewhere.
Well...
No.
Again, I don't know where your numbers are...
May I answer?
Go ahead for a second.
Make them up, doesn't make any difference.
I think you and I were talking from two different perspectives, but the same thing. One of the things that concerned me a little bit is baked into our existing rate structure is that funds to cover single-family residential trash pickup, it's being subsidized from someplace else, okay? Now, we don't know if that's because the rates on commercial or multifamily are higher than they need to be, or because we're under-collecting, we just rolled it forward.
I see.
Okay. So, no, I agree with you, and that was why I was asking, I wanna make sure that that problem doesn't, for me, doesn't get any worse when we go forward, and it's not clear to me from the alternatives that I know that, from the analysis.
Okay. Again, I apologize, we're obviously on a different wavelength somewhere else.
Right.
Rate versus cost, you put the numbers here, okay? Minus 1729, minus 885, you've got, those are your numbers.
Correct.
I did the math, okay, trust me, I did the math. You're short 84,000, which works out to be about $1 million a year, okay? So if we raise the rates 300 or 400,000, whatever you want, we're short 600. Now, maybe the commercials make that up, maybe they don't, I don't know, I'm asking.
Well, yeah, and I guess I'd make a couple of points. On page two, if you look at the rates that are being raised, we're going up $886,000. And remember that this portion of the rates, the carts, is 40% of the revenue. Vice Mayor, you may be right in your summation about the portion that the other rates contribute, because obviously, business, multifamily, everybody else is 60% of the revenue.
Yeah, I'm not counting any, that's why I'm just asking, this 886 doesn't match up with this, so where does the, in other words, if we raise the regular, the household rates 382,000, then we're, the commercials go up 500,000? Where's the 886 come from?
The 886 isn't, well...
I believe... Does anybody understand what I'm saying back there?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then maybe you can come up and explain it to me.
Is it possible that if they're 50%, only 40%...
Can some, Marshall, or whoever wants to come up and explain it to me?
Marshall and Cliff, take a shot.
Cliff, rather, I'm sorry. I mean, it's just simple math, to me, maybe not getting, we're not getting all of it, and that's why we can't make it happen.
Yeah, Bob, you, Vice Mayor Griselli, I apologize, you pretty much hit it on the head in that the other side of the equation is the commercial side...
Okay.
And the recommendation is 12% across-the-board increase on the numerous rates that are charged to commercial sector, so you actually...
So the 886 is comprised of residential and commercial?
That is the full, the full, yes, the full...
So if we, again, and again, I know these numbers are a little rough, if we estimate that we're getting 380 or 300, say $400,000 out of residential, then the other 486 is coming from the commercial side?
Correct, and that's made up through the recommendation of a 12% across the board on the commercial side.
On the commercial side, okay. All right, all right, thank you, I'm sorry.
And multifamily, right.
And I'm sorry, I apologize, Mr. Moore, I just, okay, thank you.
May I ask, Cliff, where are you going with that?
We're a million, we're a million short, in other words, if the residentials are a million short, where's that, where's that coming from? And we're not even gonna make it up, we're gonna be close, we're gonna be about $100,000 short, it looks like, or 100 and some and change and short, no matter, unless we raise some other rates, a little more percentage to make up that entire, that's where I was trying to figure out how deep of the hole, how deep the hole is, every year, to try to figure out if it's just this much, or if it's $1 million a year, or it's a couple hundred, not that a couple hundred thousand is not a lot of money, but it's just, it's a lesser hole than a million, is what I was trying to get at, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Long-winded, probably, I apologize to my colleagues if I got a little too inside-baseball there, sorry.
No, I followed it, that's fine.
I don't have to talk to you.
Good, that's...
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Moore? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
All right. This is a public hearing, and I have a lot of speaker cards here, so I'm just gonna take them in order. And what I'll do is, I'll name them, like, 1, 2, 3, so that you can queue up and take a little less time that way. So I've got Tim Smallman, and then McKee, Susie McKee, and Dimitris Vandelos. Thanks.
Good evening, my name's Tim Smallman, I live on 655 Bayport Avenue in San Carlos. I just had a couple of questions on these types of things. Number one, I'd like to say, please add me to the number of people that are opposed. I'm kind of, it's interesting that there's only 72, and I'm kind of confused, because I didn't even know that this was something that was being considered until I saw it on the agenda, so I'm curious if we're putting out enough information for the public to understand the significance of what's going on with these increases with solid waste? Is it just something that comes in a flyer to my house? Maybe it looks like junk mail and I throw it out? So that's one question I'd like to have answered. Secondly, I'd wanna know, has anyone ever audited the contractor? I see a lot of numbers flying around in spreadsheets and charts, but realistically, that doesn't tell us the story. I know that the company has a pretty plush office downtown San Francisco, and what is their gross profit? You know? It's not a publicly traded company, so I can't find that information out myself. Is there any information that we can gather as a public to find out a little bit more about what the company's making? That's two. And then Recology bid to win the contract, but we seem to have increases every single year. It's funny, to me, that it's just like that. And I think it's interesting that we only have 72 people opposed, but we're talking about 12%, which is pretty considerable. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Next speaker is Susie McKee, Dimitri, and then Lori Clark.
Hello, Susie McKee, 307 Old County Road. I'm just wondering, for one thing, why we don't have smaller cans, for one thing, than, 20 gallons is actually a lot. It would take me a year to fill up a $20 can with garbage, with recycle, and I just think there's, we gotta have some way of maybe charging less for recycling and more for garbage, something to, because we need to move this whole thing along into a much more sustainable feature, however the garbage is collected. So having smaller garbage cans, or something to that effect, I don't even use my own garbage can, I use my neighbor's, because there's not enough room to put them all out there, and I have one little bag of garbage, maybe, a week. But a fair amount of compost and a fair amount of recycle, so that's one suggestion. And the other thing was, how did Recology win this, and then still have the prices keep going up all the time? And also, there's alternatives, I know you're talking about, what is it, Cox Mountain?
Cox Mountain.
There are alternatives, ways to get rid of garbage, and I would suggest looking into them. There's something called the plasma solution, which I don't know if it's still around, it was a plasma machine that would actually liquefy and produce like an obsidian type of rock, stone out of it, and it would get rid of mountains of waste and make them into tiny little pieces. The water that was produced from it would actually produce its own electricity. So there are some options. I mean, they're not, it's not a cheap machine, and I don't know if it's still around, because it was having trouble being funded, but anyway. So I would just suggest looking into alternative ways to look at this whole problem, and not just charge more and more and more, and let people get away with more and more garbage. Also, the vendors in the area, I noticed Trader Joe's has started having a lot of recycled carting, cartons, carton stuff, packaging. And so that's something that people really need to do, to help with this whole problem. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Susie. Dimitri?
Just a quick joke, I hope Susie's neighbor realizes that she's sharing, which I'm sure.
Your neighbor knows.
A couple of quick observations. First, I wanted to thank the city council for dealing with stuff like this. This is not, this is not easy or fun stuff, I certainly wouldn't wanna deal with it. A couple of things strike me as odd, I agree with Susie about, it would seem to me that we would wanna encourage less waste for the actual garbage. And a few years ago, before the contract changed, we were able to get 10-gallon cans for our waste, and my family, I'm happy to report, it was a family of four, with two teenage daughters, we were doing the 10-gallon thing, so I was very proud of our family, and I'm sure the neighbors were laughing at our puny little garbage can. But, so, yeah, you know, I was showing Tim, you know, hey, look at this garbage can. So I'm disappointed that we don't have alternatives for smaller amounts of waste, and perhaps, as Susie was mentioning, we could come up with creative ways where we're actually not penalizing folks for having less actual garbage, and incentivize the smaller cans by keeping those rates low, and disproportionately actually affecting the larger amounts of waste, because what we wanna do is encourage more recycling and more composting. And that, you know, those are just some things to consider, that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Lori Clark, followed by Tim Hillburn.
Hi, I'm really impressed with what my neighbors and other San Carlsans are speaking about. I think one of the things I'd just like to add to that is really the value. I'm in the customer service business as well, and I can't just pass along cost to my customer every time somebody gets a raise or something happens. And so, as we talk about what Recology has done for us, I mean, it's amazing that we have 70% renewable right now, and it's, we couldn't have done it without you, I think the service you provide is excellent, but I want you to think not only about the size of our bins, but the frequency of the pickups. And I wrote a letter, and I'm sure most of you have read it, it's really about the value. I live in a family of three, and I don't even take my, I could take my bins out every three to four weeks. I have a mother who's on a fixed income in this city as well, who really can't afford rate hikes every year, and probably uses less of the bins than I do. So as you're thinking about all these numbers that everybody's throwing around, they're not just numbers, they're a little bit over my head, I mean, and I like numbers, but I just, my head's spinning looking at them all, it's really about the value of the service and what we're trying to do. We're trying to reduce waste, we're trying to be more sustainable with what we do, and I think tying all of that together and providing value for us is an area where I'd like to see more focus and more options. So, anyway, that's, thank you for your time, and that's what I wanted to say tonight.
Thank you, Lori. Tim Hillburn, Hillburn, I think it is, hi, Tim, and, hold on, Estelle...
Hi.
Okay, you know who you are, thank you. Okay, Tim, go ahead.
Tim Hillburn, 1052 Sylvan Drive. Just two quick things. First of all, this is probably more for Mayor Growcott and Vice Mayor Griselli. Back when you guys were looking at the bids, what my question is, is when you look at the bids, aren't those bid out, you know, three, five, seven, I don't know how many years, and actually looking at the cost structure of what it is, looking at the potential growth of the city, both commercially and single-family residential as well, or just residential, I just would like to know a little bit more about that bid process, and also, is the public involved in that bid process as well? Is there any kind of input? So I'd really appreciate you guys looking into that. Lastly, as a public school teacher and employee, I'm required to put in over 50% of my own money into my retirement account, STRS. I'd really like you guys to look into what their structure is as far as benefits, health and welfare, who is paying that, how that's being paid, what percentage are they, is each employee paying out as well? As Mr. Moore pointed out, that's a significant amount, a significant cost amount, so I'd really appreciate you guys looking into that before we make any decisions on this, and that's about it, thanks.
You want to say something?
No.
Tim?
Hi, yeah. Should I start?
Yeah, go ahead.
My name is Estelle Wile, I am a resident of San Carlos on Britton Avenue, and so I think that rates should remain low. Right now, they're at one, the 20 gallon is at one quarter of the 96, a little bit less than one quarter, but it's a little, it's about 24%, that's almost five times, one-fifth the size of the other ones. And so I think that we should not be penalizing those who are recycling, rather, we should be penalizing those who are not recycling. So while I think it's, Recology has done a great job, and I think it's amazing what this city has done in terms of recycling, and how Recology and the city council has encouraged us to recycle, we're only at 70%, we should be higher than that. And right, this one right here is giving a free ride to those who have decided not to recycle. I cannot fill up, like everyone else said, I cannot fill up a 20-gallon, I don't even fill up a kitchen bag every week, there's only about 10 things that go into the trash, plastic wrap, styrofoam, other than Christmas, we have never filled up a kitchen trash bag in a week. And so by increasing disproportionately those who are recycling, and basically giving a free ride to those who already feel entitled, we're adding to their entitlement by not giving them, basically, we're paying a cost of living increase, and that should be a burden upon everyone. I would go with number one, or maybe increase the 20 and 32 gallon by 12%, but at least increase the 64 and 96 gallon by at least 5% as well. We need to encourage them to recycle, and, thank you.
Albert Schlocker, and then David Waterbury?
I've been a resident of San Carlos since '48. You asked us to recycle, we recycle. I don't even generate a plastic bag a week, shopping bag. I don't put my black can out. 20 gallons is ridiculous. I think we ought to be encouraging the 64 and the 96 people to do more recycle. That's where all the, I mean, you're penalizing the residentials. That's where all the, I mean, you're penalizing the residuals. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we've got David coming up, and Luis Boras following.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I have a couple of concerns. One is, I happen to have, until just recently, I happened to have property in the city of San Mateo. And I note that the rates in the city of San Mateo run roughly 30% less than the rates in St. Carlos. And I just wondered, and I went down and I talked to Recology about it, and they said, well, that's what your city negotiated. And so I'm wondering what's going on there. And I have the actual rates, because I pay garbage in both cities. And the second thing is, I want to make it clear that just because somebody uses a 64-gallon or 96-gallon can, that does not mean they don't recycle. That doesn't mean that at all. And that's the wrong interpretation. But I think what will happen, if you raise rates anymore on the 64- and 96-gallon, they're going to go over to smaller sizes, and then your whole plan that you've described very well in this table, I think, is not going to work out. Because I, and I'm very much, if you have to increase rates, I say, keep Table Three or Table Four is very fair, because there's no reason why people that have a lot, this will happen, have a lot of trash, should be subsidized to people that have 20-gallon cans. And that's not fair at all. And I don't think that's fair to the ratepayers. Because if you look at the actual cost, people want 10-gallon cans, but I'm sure the actual cost of a 10-gallon can is very close to the cost of a 20-gallon can for the services rendered. And I think people should pay in proportion to what the costs are. And it's got so far out of whack that this thing, that people with maybe large families that have 64 gallons, doesn't mean they don't recycle, but they're paying proportionally more than they should. And this attempts to make this more equitable, Table Three or Table Four. And I congratulate Mr. Moore on his good, excellent presentation of explaining this. Thank you.
Let's see. Lou Boras, yeah, thank you. Followed by John Hoffman. And actually, before you start, there's just you three, so there's you, and then there's John Hoffman, and then Richard Harz. Is that right? Okay, very good.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Growcott, council members. My name is Lou Boras, live in St. Carlos, Carmelita Drive. I guess the reason why I'm here is because when I read the notice, I mean, I took it as we were going to get a 54.25% raise, the maximum, you know, and I, so I came down and I talked to Brian Moore, who gave me half of his lunch hour talking with him, and I really appreciate that. And one thing he did explain to me that I wasn't aware of is that there's two separate, I would say, like, companies. One is Recology, the one that picks up the stuff, and the other one recycles it, you know, the, Recology picks it up, dumps it over the yard. The recyclers come and they recycle it, and there's a separate company, which is two separate things, which all go into the pickup of that. The only thing that I, you know, when I saw the raise, I called the yard down there and asked them, I said, you know, there's only two of us, you know, every other week we dump our garbage, and the one time we dump it, I mean, it's not even full, and the third time we dump it is with corn coughs from my wife's canary Avery, and we fill it up one time a month. So consequently, I said, can I have a pickup, you know, twice a month? They said, no, no, I mean, you can't do that, because it's, the health says you have to have it every month. I mean, every week, I'm sorry. So I guess my, my thing is, if you have to phase in a thing, I would probably go, I mean, with option number three, because at least it's not like, what is it, Burlingame, they did, they did a 25% all-in-one shot, and that, that I think is kind of tough on everybody. But if anything has to be done, as I say, I would favor option number three. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
John Hoffman, 909 Crestview Drive. I want to thank Brian for the discussion that he and I had on this issue. It appears that, over the course of the contract, that each year, there's a request for a raise, each year it's granted, and the structure of the contract makes it difficult not to do that. I believe that there needs to be more attention paid to the initial contract and an enterprise approach taken, not simply a cost-plus approach. The idea of a smaller container is apparently very appealing, but the major cost is in the pickup, not in the size of the container, whether it's 96 or 10 or whatever size. I think the solution is that if there is a restriction on the increase or no increase allowed in a future year, then it is incumbent upon the service provider to find internal economies. They have no incentive to do it if they believe that there will be an automatic increase that they simply request. So I would request of you, as the council, to be more diligent in terms of the contract drawn, so that there is, in fact, an enterprise approach, rather than a typical government approach. I would also suggest that less frequent pickup would serve, to generate substantial internal economies. Like many of these folks, we have a 96-gallon green waste container that gets food scraps. We do not trim our bushes every week. That happens maybe twice a year. So a pickup on a monthly basis or a biweekly basis would be more desirable. The same thing for us, at least, is true with the recycling. Although we recycle almost everything, the container is of such a large size that we fill only a fraction of it except the day after Christmas. And I think, again, this could be a biweekly, rather than a weekly service. Thank you.
Thank you. And last speaker. Richard?
My name is Richard Harz, 961 Montgomery Street. And I think we are charged too much. And it seems like, when we had regular services years ago, they had gentlemen taking along, picking them up and all. Now that we are using automation, the gentlemen aren't there and the trucks are automatic. So that eliminates a lot of workers that were being used at the time. Then we get, like, a small garbage can, and there's only two of us in the hospital. It seems like it's not enough. And so, the size of it, everybody's talking about, I could maybe disagree on that. The other thing, too, is, in the recycling, we do all the work. We have a can for this, we have a can for this, and a can for this. And all we do, all they do is just dump it into various containers and have automation sort it out. And I often wonder, you know, like, the service that we do get, when they dump out the garden debris box, it seems like it never all gets into the truck. And then we got to clean it up and use the small little green guy, the black guy, I mean, to fill up what they missed. Hopefully, they dump the garden debris box before the other, and we can put it in and get it done that week. Also, they never really dump the garden debris box. There's always some stinking, smelly mess in there, can never get it out, and they'll just shake it a little, it might do it. But about four out of five weeks, it's always in there. I often wonder why we don't have recycling for styrofoam. That's the biggest problem we got. I mean, you can't even take it over to the place in, what do you call it, the center over here in East St. Carlos, and get, to get rid of it. They don't take it either. They seem to be making money on recyclables, and they should be paying for what they get. I don't understand why we're doing all the work and then they sell the stuff. They should be making some profit on that, not raising our rates. And then, there's 5,000, 5,540 people that have to sign in. We've never been notified of that, and I'm sure if we had notification throughout the city, we'd fill out a form and have it done. So, hold on.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, any other speakers on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Discussion on this item, then.
But while folks are waiting, let me just explain something that I passed out that kind of relates to what Mr. Griselli was looking at. I wrote staff today and asked them if they could put together some kind of chart that would show a revenue stream if we did a 5% increase on the 20-gallon, a 10% increase on 32-gallons, 12% increase on the 64-gallon, and a 15% increase on 96-gallons. Of course, I was just looking at residential, I wasn't looking at the commercial, and wanted to see what kind of revenue that generated, and possibly if there's some other areas where the difference in revenue could be picked up. Because like Mr. Griselli, I did some math and figured out that what they were looking at, at least with the increase on the residential, was about $382,000 additional revenue from what's being taken in currently. So I just wanted, I'll talk about that later after I hear a discussion, but I just wanted to explain to you what this piece of paper was in front of you, and where it came from.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just one general comment before we get into discussion. My takeaway from the feedback that I'm sure we all received, that I received before tonight's meeting, and from the comments that were made this evening, it really emphasizes in my mind something I said back in October, which is that I really feel that staff needs to do some more in terms of outreach and education of the community about issues related to trash rates. Because without going into specific details, I'd say that most of the comments and suggestions that people had, which I would argue, I would agree are actually quite reasonable, are actually factored into the process already. And that's a sign of the fact that we have not done an adequate job of explaining to people how this thing is structured, what its history is, why it is the way it is, and whatnot. So that's not going to have anything to do with rates, per se, but I do think we have an obligation to educate the public on how these things are structured.
I agree. That was well stated. Thank you.
I just have a question for Mr. Moore. Mr. Hoffman brought up the concept of incentivizing Recology to be more, you know, to reduce their cost.
Right.
If we said to them, look, this is all we're going to pay. I realize that's a ridiculous thing, but just go with me, go along with it for a second. If we say, you know, this is the maximum, we think that we can charge our ratepayers, how do they, how do they respond? What are their internal costs that they deal with that determine what they feel that they're going to charge? I mean, for example, you mentioned pension costs, and the fact that they all got, I think, 4% raises or something, but you also mentioned that pension cost is an additional 8% on top of that? Is that right?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay. So, going back to my original question, what do you think Recology's responses to us?
Well, a couple of things, Councilmember Collins. First of all, we have three representatives from Recology in the room, so we could probably
Maybe they could talk.
When I get finished, if they feel inclined to come up, they could certainly take a shot at it. A couple of things about the, your questions. First of all, just to be fair and just to be clear here, the collective bargaining agreement that affects these costs was not signed by Recology. It was signed by Allied Waste as they were heading out the door. And some have suggested that they kind of, you know, handed Recology kind of a little birthday gift as they were leaving for not getting the contract renewal. You know, one can argue that or not. As I indicated in the presentation, when we were discussing back in 2007 at the staff level, the RFP process to recommend to you, one of the initial recommendations I made to the council at the time was to index all 10 years and not to pass through the final labor contract. But as I indicated, due to some of the larger agencies and SBWMA feeling strongly that there should be a transition, I think was the expression they used, we did, in fact, pass through those costs. And as you saw from the numbers, those are higher increases in salary and benefits than most people get, certainly, you know, certainly larger than anything happening, you know, in our agency. And I think that's one of the drivers, and, you know, that's one of the reasons I wanted to point it out to you. In terms of the compensation and what happens if you don't raise the rate sufficient to cover the cost and the two years of catch-up, essentially, it keeps rolling over. And that, a good example was what happened last year. You know, there was a need for an 8.9% increase. The council passed through 5.3 and said, we're going to, we're going to roll over 3.6% to 2013, which means those rates will then be higher. You can keep doing that under this contract, but remember that whatever amount you don't cover, roll over, whatever term you want to use, there's a prime rate plus one, roughly, you know, 3% or 4% last time I checked, interest that accrues. One of the interesting things, by the way, that's different from this contract versus the one we had with Allied Waste, is Allied Waste actually let the cities roll it over for the entire 10 years. So when we got to the end of that 10-year period, most of the cities had a, it's almost like, I guess, a bar tab, had a pretty big tab. I think ours was something on the order of a million dollars. And so the first year of the Recology rate increase in 2011, where people were complaining about Recology, actually, a million dollars of that had nothing to do with Recology, had to do with Allied Waste, because we were not keeping our rate where it needed to be. So I guess that's, you know, and that's the bottom line on deferring the rate. The council can choose, if you wish, to not raise the rate as much as you need to this year, but then you'll have the same issue that you had last year. You're just going to be rolling over whatever that differential is to 2014. And then on top of that, I think the one ray of light, and I tried to talk about it earlier, was the fact that, starting in 2014, the labor costs no longer pass through to the customers. And in 2014, we moved a series of indexes, which the SBWMA staff, and again, some of them are here, and they could talk to this better than I, but should keep that number down considerably. And since, like every contract for service, labor costs are the big chunk of that, you know, we're optimistic that that will result in, you know, better numbers next year. But again, until it happens, you know, we'll see.
Okay. It does seem a little counterintuitive, because as someone pointed out, I remember the old days when there was a truck going down the street, and you had five or six guys running out to different homes. And now there's one truck and one guy. And so, I don't know what the, you know, how many less workers they have now, but the, maybe the trucks cost a lot.
Well, I guess to your questions, Councilmember Collins, a couple of things. Number one, you are right that as part of the rates, the new vehicles and equipment and things that Recology, and for that matter, the other company, South Bay Recycling, bought for starting new service in 2011 are part of the rates. So that's certainly part of it, yeah.
Through the mayor, if I may just add to that, because this is a question I hear a lot from people about the number of people on the truck. There are also a lot more trucks. So even though there's, even though there's only one driver on the, on some of the trucks, there's different routes for, there's a truck for garbage, there's a truck for recycling, there, you know, so there's other trucks driving around, which increase your equipment costs, but there's also other manpower involved.
Mr. Ober.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got to cite a couple of things here. I'm just going to mention in passing, I got interested in this topic, so I've spent way more time with Mr. Moore and with the Recology folks than any sane person should have in the last few months. But I wrote a very lengthy posting on my blog analyzing the percentage increase, and if anybody's curious, you're welcome to take a look at that. But just to give you a quick rundown, of the 12-point increase, about 2.6, 2.6% of that, so about a fifth, is due to cost deferrals from prior years. In other words, where this council in prior years decided not to raise rates as high as we should have to fully recoup the increase in costs, we're paying the bar tab for that. Roughly about another fifth of this has to do with the way the contract works. When we, what basically it does is it establishes a pool, basically, an allocatable cost pool that is split amongst all of the communities. And that's the thing that is governed by going up from year to year by indexes. Okay? So it's limited in how fast it can grow. But when you come time to decide which community gets which share of the cost, that's determined by how many hours of trucks your community uses. And in our case, some very big drivers for that are when we instituted organic waste recycling, compost recycling, and when we introduced a more aggressive commercial recycling ordinance, we ended up using a lot more hours for those things. And so that means we get hit with a bigger share of the pool, okay? So again, that's about a fifth of it, so that's two fifths of it right there. About another fifth has to do with the labor rates that Brian had mentioned. Not a fifth, I think it's about a sixth if I look at, well, let's see, no, it's about 1/10 of the increase, is fuel costs. And, you know, lest we forget, I mean, fuel costs rose a lot last year, and it takes a lot of money to run the trucks. And I'm not trying to apologize for what the increases are, but I just think it's important that we recognize that a good portion of these things are the result of policy or practical decisions that we've made over the last few years, and that's what's driving the rates. And I'm not proposing, by the way, that we necessarily cancel the organic recycling program or whatnot, because I personally think it's a good idea, but there's a price tag that comes with it. And this is part of the price tag.
Mr. Mora, we've had both tonight and in the letters, quite a few people talk about the fact that they don't really need to put their cans out as often as once a week. And I was looking at AB 939 to try and get an answer, because I was prompted by one of these letters about, a lady had written that she had actually called over to recology or SBWMA to ask about, you know, is there a way to have my service reduced and save money on my rates? And the answer was, "No, state law requires trash pickup every week." Is that across the board? Is that just for the black containers? Is that recycling or what does it apply to?
Okay, Mayor, you asked some good questions, and let me try to handle some of those. First of all, you are correct, there is a state law that requires weekly garbage service. It does not require weekly recycling. As I think one of the speakers talked about earlier, the state law holds that they believe it's sort of a health and safety issue. Going back to another point I think Councilmember Collins made, and also some members of the public, it is true that prior to the service change, we had a lot more cart categories than we do today. We used to have up to 15 different rate categories, and now we have four. And some of you on the council will recall that when we went out to the RFP, actually the original choice we had was to have three service categories with 32 being the lowest, or we could choose to have a 20-gallon, which originally was proposed to be a 32-gallon container with what we call an insert, and that's another discussion. But basically, that is to accommodate the automated trucks. My understanding, and again, the folks from either SBWMA or recology can correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understand it, because the solid waste services, garbage and recycling in this county had never, literally never been out to competitive proposal until 2007, the way we were doing it with the little bins you moved out to the container, those who remember that, and the unautomated trucks were getting to be a bit of an anachronism. We were one of the few places in the Bay Area that still did it that way. And one of the trade-offs when we went to automated trucks is we had to, you know, consolidate the sizes. And kind of get back to your question, Mayor, as we were going through that transition, I had some discussions with SBWMA about what were we going to do with the customers who were used to the smaller cart sizes, not just 20, but, you know, 10 and 15, literally, which we used to have. And Mr. Feldman and I actually worked with the federal government, the EPA, and were working on a grant application to try what is called every other week, or in the garbage business, they call it EOW service. And we literally would pilot that. And we unfortunately ran into a stumbling block, and it's exactly the law that the mayor pointed out. When we talked to the county health, environmental health folks, which are the folks who enforce that law, let's say, for this county, they did not give us a waiver. And apparently, the waiver is what we would have needed to try that. Now, there is another way to do that, as I think some people have indicated, and that is, you know, even though the truck comes around weekly, if you don't put out your container, obviously the truck passes by and goes to the next one, that actually, to Mr. Ober, or Councilmember Ober's point, does in fact lower costs to the community. Unfortunately, for the person who's not putting out the container weekly, it doesn't directly benefit them, it benefits all the residents. But today, that's really the only way you can legally, let's call it, not be putting out your garbage weekly. If the customer chooses not to put it out, there's really nobody who follows up on that. But the city proper has to subscribe for that level of service. Although I think it's fair to say both Mr. Feldman and I continue to work on that one, because I'm not ready to give up on that yet. I still think that given the large number of people we have in this community who have small carts, there's got to be a way to offer that service. We just haven't figured out legally how to do it.
So a follow-up on that, and then Mr. Ober has a question. And so does Mr. Collins. Is there a way we could adjust our service scheduling so that people still put out their black containers every week? Sounds like the law requires that. But we could be saying to them, "Your blue containers, your yard waste containers, you don't have to put those out every week." And we could switch the, is there a way to switch the, I know one of the issues with the yard waste containers is that's also the container that food waste goes in, and that has to go every week.
Right.
Can we switch some of this around somehow so that what goes out every week is one thing and what goes out once a month or every other week is something else? Because you're right, when we used to put out the, I remember when we used to put out the bins, that was, I think, once a month, along with your yard waste container?
Once every other week.
Well, I think it was every other week, okay, something. I remember always having to look at the calendar for, okay, yeah, you know, it goes out. And only the garbage went out every week. Is there a way that we could return to that?
Well, I think if you, and I think this is one of the comments Councilmember Ober made, if you didn't have the food organics, the mayor is right, you could have every other week recycling. Now, as a practical matter, again, as I was mentioning with the black carts, if people don't put them out, in effect, you sort of have created your own every other week service. And unfortunately, you personally don't benefit, but the community at large benefits because the way these rates are calculated and the routes are calculated, the truck driver literally has a computer-based system on their truck, they call it RouteWare, and essentially it records how many cans they've, you know, done in each house and how much, how many, how much time they've spent in San Carlos versus Foster City or somewhere else. To do something further than that, as far as literally changing the level of service, we would obviously have to negotiate that with recology, because they have a 10-year agreement with us that says this is the service level San Carlos and these other 11 agencies have contracted for. The other thing too, by the way, that I would mention in passing, and I think I touched upon it in the presentation, is remember that when we did have the every other week recycling service and we didn't have food scraps, we also were not in compliance with state law. So there is a bit of a risk there in going backward.
In what fashion were we not in?
We were not at 50% recycling for residential, single-family residential. We were about 48%. We were close, but we weren't there.
So we attribute the additional, that delta to just food waste?
Food waste and weekly recycling, yep.
Every week pickup.
And getting rid of the bins, you don't have, you can single-stream it, that's a big factor. Mayor, I was going in the same direction, Mayor Grokot, as you were. I mean, I actually would like, it's not going to affect rates for discussion for tonight, but for next year's discussion, I would very much like staff to look at whether we can make changes on the frequency of pickup of the recycling. I understand about state law with the organic waste and the trash. But even there, another question I had there, Mr. Mora, is does the state law require that every single address have a pickup every week? Because what I'm thinking is, you know, for example, what if my neighbors and I wanted to get together on one can?
Yeah.
And we put it out every week and we just fill it up? But it's, and somehow we obviously have to figure out how to split the bill amongst the three of us.
Right now, excuse me, right now, the city municipal code requires every resident to have garbage pickup weekly.
Is that reflective of a state law that requires that?
I probably have to punt that one to Mr. Rubens.
I'm impressed that you actually know the answer to that, Mr. Rubens.
You know, I don't have the answer off the top of my head, but it's, I seem to recall when we brought that ordinance forward that that was the reason that garbage service is required. And, but I can report back to you on that one.
If I may, I would just like to ask, when you're doing your research, and I know I'm reacting to just an off-the-cuff recollection of what, you know, what the statute said, I would argue that homes that share a can, they are getting trash pickup every week. They're just sharing a can, okay? In that sense, it's not that much different than a multifamily or multi-residential structure, right?
And that's true. I understand the point. It does have an effect on overall rates because it would, for the same reasons I think that have been discussed, you have to take into account a different level of cart migration, it seems to me, if we go to that level of service, because then you'd still have to recover the cost. I see on the rate notice, it's $8 million. It might go down if you have that system, but we'd have to, we'd have to look at that for you.
And in fairness, as Mr. Mora touched on a minute ago, it's also possible that that kind of adjustment would not show up as a cost reduction for San Carlos until the current contract expired and was renegotiated. But, you know, even then, if directionally that was something we could do, I'd like to know that.
I'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, and I guess just to tag on to this question as well from Councilmember Ober, the other variable that we were looking at, we were trying to figure out the every other week pickup, recognizing a lot of folks in town do have rather small cart, containers or small volumes of material, particularly after we went to weekly recycling, that we would still obviously have to renegotiate the contract with recology if we were doing anything more aggressive than what I guess I would call voluntary of the every other week service, where people just don't put out their cans and everybody's costs go down that way. That's something that would be, you know, up to individuals to do. But if we tried to literally change the frequency, we would have to negotiate it. Although I will tell you that there is a vision in the solid waste industry that as we ramp up recycling, that we are eventually going to get to that place where we don't maybe need weekly garbage service. And frankly, that was part of the pitch that Mr. Feldman and I made to the EPA on trying to get that grant, was to say, you know, in San Carlos, residential homes recycle so much, I think we could be an early candidate for this every other week pilot. And, you know, because of the little bump we hit with state law and with the county's health folks, so we didn't quite get there. But, you know, certainly if the council's interested, and I'm hearing some interest, you know, I'm certainly up for digging deeper.
Mr. Collins.
I promise I don't want to waste any more time on this.
But you're going to, you'll ask another question.
It's my last one, I promise.
Okay, I'll remember.
Don't trash it.
I don't want to belabor this, so let's, let's. You said that there, just theoretically, a truck drives down the street and there's half the cans there one day. You said it actually costs less when you factor in the cost, if suddenly there were less, there were half the cans in the city one day?
Correct. And I guess what I was getting at was, I believe, one of the points Mr. Ober, or Councilmember Ober was making about the fact that the way the rate structure works is you look at the actual number of hours in each community, you take the whole cost and you allocate, if that's the right term, the costs to per city. And if, as you suggest, Councilmember Collins, suddenly, you know, black carts or blue carts or whatever category you want to talk about suddenly disappear, presumably those trucks are going to be spending less time in San Carlos, and hence, our allocation of costs in, let's say, 2014 might drop. It's kind of a voluntary every other week or every third week service, and it's something that, you know, could be done, although we're kind of in the unusual spot of the city can't do it, but the residents sure could.
No, that's kind of where I was going with it. There was some sort of organic movement to encourage people to follow what I call OWF, only when full, to put their recyclables out. But I realize, the city can't, you're saying the city can't actually cheerlead it, right?
Well, you know, I mean, we, you know, I suppose we could even point that out to people, let's say. It's just legally, we can't mandate that short of renegotiating the contract, or in the case of the black cart, as the mayor was suggesting, we can't literally do it without a waiver from the county and a renegotiation. But if individual people do it, there you are, the OWF or whatever you said.
Right. All right, thank you.
Yes, and building on that, and what Councilmember Ober was talking about, in terms of providing people with more information about how the rate is determined, if part of the information was letting people know it is the amount of time they spend on the streets picking up the trash and the fewer trashcans there are, that makes everyone more knowledgeable in the community. I certainly hope that we will look into what the different options are. I know I've been reading about some things that Palo Alto has been looking at. One of them, I'm not quite sure how they were going to do this, but single-streaming the recyclables and the trash. And so somewhere, someone was going to have to separate the trash from the recyclables so that they, so that it could be done on a less frequent basis, the pickups in Palo Alto. So communities are looking at these different options, and I think there'll be some more ideas as time goes on for the next contract.
Okay. I think we've probably asked all the questions we're going to ask. We need to look at one of these options. And so I'm going to open the discussion, because again, I presented you with this chart that staff put together for me based on my thoughts, and I just wanted to explain what I was doing here and why. The concept for me is, especially after reading through all these letters, what I saw repeatedly, and by the way, Mr. Mora, I hope recology will read through these, because there's a lot of insight into how people feel about the service they get and how it's performed, inefficiencies they perceive in the company, inefficiencies from having three trucks drive down their street every week for trash pickup, picking up half-full or one-third full cans, comments about how cans are left in driveways, cans are left strewn about the street, and it's, I've said this before, to me, I look at that, it's not the fault of the drivers, they've been cut down to one driver per vehicle, and I've watched them before, they mess up on a can, and that you can almost watch them, "Do I get out and take the time to fix that? Or do I just keep moving because I'm on a schedule and I got to get this done?" So it's a difficult position to be in as a driver, I'd say, alone on a truck trying to, trying to straighten out this stuff.
And I guess to your suggestion, Mr. Mayor, recology was sent the 72 protest letters I had this afternoon by email. So they have them, all but the two we got this evening, and they will, once I get them, they will get them.
Good. Because there's, you know, I spent a lot of time reading through these, and you could see a lot of consistency in what people were saying. And most of it, I must have seen the word inefficient, you know, 60 times out of the 70-some letters that we've got here. But back to the cost structure, the other thing that I noticed a lot is many of these letters appeared to be from people on fixed incomes. And I know when I look at this rate increase, no matter what you're looking at, at the 20 gallons, it's not a lot of money, but when you're on social security, $560 a month is not a lot of money. So either way, that's a message I got loud and clear here, is we've got a good many of residents, I think one of the letter writers pegged it at about 18% of our households are people who are retired and on a fixed income. And so what I was trying to do with the proposal I have here of just doing a 5% increase on the 20 gallons was do two things. One, create a sanctuary place for elderly people who are on a fixed income, that they can stay to these 20-gallon cans that many of them have gone to in order to save money, because they've seen these rates go up and they can't afford it, and so they've looked for a sanctuary place to not have their costs go up as much. And so I was thinking something around the 5% rate might be fair to them. And also, you know, I was on the council with, when it was Bob and I and, who's that guy from the movie theaters?
Brad Lewis.
Brad Lewis, excuse me.
The movies.
The movies. Brad Lewis, Omar. Brad Lewis, Omar, Randy Royce, you know, going back to that era, which has gone by so fast, what we were trying to do was get people to, to recycle, and that was the other common theme in these letters, is gee, we did what you asked us to do, and now you're going to bang us over the head with higher rate increases? That doesn't make sense. We did what you wanted, and now you're punishing us. And so, for those two reasons, I could see having a lower rate increase on the 20-gallons. I still think we need to encourage people, Brian said, we're at 70, the state's going to require us to be at 75, so we need, we still need to do something to encourage people to recycle and go to those smaller cans. My other rate increases were 10, 12, and 15, I was just trying to graduate it up. I'm not very stuck on that. My, my whole thing is just the concept of, let's not punish those people at the 20-gallons.
Just as, if I may, one of the things that, that I learned in my reading is, for many years, there was the presumption that when people were making the decision about what they recycled and what they threw in the trash, that monetary incentives were the way to go. That, in other words, subsidizing, putting out less garbage and therefore more recycling was what drove increased recycling rates. And in reality, the experience has been very different, and you even saw it mirrored in our community. What really jumped up the recycling rates to the, you said around 70% now, is when we went to single-stream recycling and more frequent. In other words, it was, it's convenience, not money, that, that is the, is the incentive. And I just throw that out there because I, I think it's important we understand not only the sort of theoretical basis of how people are making these decisions, but in practice, the way they are. Not everybody, but in, in, in general.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
I've been fairly quiet up here.
Yeah.
Thought it was going to end. But anyway, you have $295,000 there in your total, and I'm, I'm not trying to pick at you, you know, in your total right here.
No, that staff has that, I didn't have that.
Oh, I apologize.
That, that was the target of all the different tables, they all come out to about $295,000, that's.
And of course, you and I disagree 90,000 on that. Okay, never mind, I won't ask the question. I guarantee you that's not right, but anyway, all right, good.
No, I, I actually, Mr. Griselli, when I did it, I recognized, I should complete my, my presentation here. I came up with the same figures that you did.
Yeah.
I had $382,000 annually, that they were trying to look for. I recognize that when I made the adjustments, that I was about 4,000, 4,600 short per month.
Right.
And, and that would have to be made up someplace else. And what I suggested when I was talking to the city manager about this earlier today is this other rate increase of 3.25% for, for the Q category, that perhaps we increase that, you know, by 5% or 10% or something, you know, get it there, get, make up the difference there.
I understand, okay, thank you, I just, I just wanted to understand, because my numbers come out to be about 9%, not, 9.3% and not 12%, if you use 295.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, we've talked about all this, basically, everyone's talked about the food scraps. To me, this is a catch-22. This is, if you, if you go every-other-week, the reason we, as you said, it's convenient, we put it out there, that's why we're up to 70%. And our regular garbage is, I have, I, like a lot of these people, I can't fill, I fill up a bag barely. I could, I could go a month without taking my, but it's, you can't do that, you got to put your garbage out. The foods, the food scraps was a great idea, but, as Mr. Griselli pointed out to me about two or three months ago, I'd be violating state law if I don't put those food scraps out every, every week. Have to do that. So, it's, it's back one way, back the other. And the one thing that we haven't talked about a lot of, but it's been mentioned, is this darned cart migration. Is, as fast as, or not as fast, but as we raise these rates, people are going to go, I don't need a 32-gallon can anymore, I need a 20-gallon can. So they drop down, so now the revenue is short, and I don't need a 64, I need a 32. So the cart migration, I don't know what percentage of it is, but it affects a certain percentage of why these numbers just keep going back and forth. And until we get to 2014, in my opinion, and get rid of this gosh darn labor contract that's, you know, was obviously, as you mentioned, was a parting, parting gift from our previous supplier, and it goes to COLA then, it goes to cost of living, and moderates that, and basically, we stop cart migration, but that doesn't seem to be stopping, but it is slowing down.
Sure, it's slowing down, yeah.
Slowing down, we've got, we've got this, this darn problem. I mean, I'm not, obviously, we all realize it, but I'm just trying to verbalize it to other people, that there's a lot of moving parts here, and that's why these rates, it's, it's counterintuitive, but that's why these things keep, keep going up.
Well, to me, that, all the things that you said argue, again, for something that stays closer to what we've been doing in the past, rather than hit with a monthly surcharge, and, and especially this 0% on the bigger containers, because we're still trying to get people to, to do some migration, and it has slowed down, and when we get to 2014 and we, we let loose of the labor.
Right.
We might find some savings that would pay for some of this in the future.
I agree with you, I, I have to tell you, and I know Mr. Moore is concerned about this high excess in 64, 96, and that's his job, to tell us, but I still say, the reason, and you and I were on the council, the reason we set up this rate structure is to try to get folks to use smaller cans, and to, to do more recycling, which has happened, and some, and the composting and all the rest of it. If you only had one can sitting out there, here go the leaves, here go the food scraps, here go the recycling, here goes everything else. And that's what we tried to do, and I think, I agree with you. I think that's what we should do, we should incentivize for a smaller can.
Okay, I just, I, I don't want to be overly redundant, but I'll repeat what I said a minute ago. The, the evidence from many communities, not just ours, is that the financial stuff isn't really what drives the behavioral change, okay?
Well, minions are different on that.
I understand, I understand, I'm just sharing you, sharing you what I've read, okay? And, you know, my, my concern in, with the mayor's proposal, frankly, is that it aggravates a problem that we talked about a few months ago. It make, it digs the hole even bigger on the gap between cost and, and pickup. I'm very sensitive to the issue of folks being on, on fixed incomes. If that's an issue that we want to address, I would actually rather see staff come out, assuming we can, with a study and see if there's a proposal where we can directly provide a different rate category for senior citizens. That, to me, would be a cleaner way of saying, there's a specific problem here for senior citizens on fixed incomes, we want to recognize that and deal with it, and, and not just change the rate across the board.
Well, I guess, to the point, we did look at that a couple of years ago, and, and one of the things to think about, and again, I know the council wants us to bring this back in the spring, which is why I want to highlight this now, is there's really two schools of thought as to how you do that. One is, you give seniors as a group a rate break, and then, of course, that means the other non-señors pay slightly more, because you still have to raise the same amount of money. The other approach, which we see actually on Recology of the Coast, by the way, over in the Pacifica area, is they have a program based on ability to pay. Now, I would imagine, based on the letters we've received the last couple of years, and my understanding of the customer base, that many of the people who would benefit from an ability to pay structure probably would in fact be seniors, but not all. And the way they do it on the coast, as I understand it, they use what's called the PG&E Care Program, which is a set of specific criteria, where you document that you're on a fixed income, and your income is so much, you show your, you know, PG&E certificate, and then you get placed on a lower structure. It could either be a percent discount, or it could be, as, as Mr. Grocot suggests, like a lifeline rate, or I think he used a different term, but. And, and really, again, the question of the hour is, that's a local decision, this council could do something like that in the future, but again, the trade-off is, it's just like the discussion of truing up the rates here.
Somebody else is.
Somebody else is going to subsidize it, those who aren't in that category of need. So, the answer is, if you want to do it, you certainly can, it's not affected by the franchise, it's a local decision, but sooner or later, that subsidy amount has to be paid by someone else.
And so, I'm going to respond to Mr. Olbert's two comments. One, you're, you're correct about the single stream, and I don't know about this article that you read, but I would argue that, you know, we had people migrating to smaller carts when we didn't have single stream, we just had the financial incentive, which shows me that it's a multiple-factor thing, it's not one thing or the other. The, the idea of coming up with a seniors-only rate or a lifeline rate, as Mr. Moore suggests, I think is a discussion for, again, 2014, when we're going to have even more moving parts, because we're going to have the labor contract deal out of it and so forth. I was trying to consider a solution for this year, for this moment, for this time, based on these letters. And I see, you know, like, was quoted in the paper today, for every letter we received, there's probably 100 people that would write the same letter. So I don't look at this as 74 letters, I look at this as 7,400 letters. And I just think that, you know, we've got a lot of people who are concerned about their financial situation, so I'm trying to respond to that this year, right now, and I don't think we dig that great of a hole. I do have one question for Mr. Moore, are we allowed to tinker with the 3.25%? Can we increase that so we don't lose as much?
Yeah, that was one, one observation I was going to make about your proposal, is that the 218 notice sets ceilings, so you can't really tonight adopt more than a 3.25% rate for attachment Q or 12, or go to 15% on, on 96. However, what you could do, you could go up to the amounts in the notice, and then you could renotice it and have another one of these hearings for those two categories only, if you wanted to do that.
Were we going to have to do something about the 96-gallons, depending on which one we picked, right?
That's correct, that's correct. If you go 12 across the board, we're going to have to renotice on 96.
Yeah, so we could have been in that position anyways.
Yes, you could be.
All right.
Yeah, just, I just want to point out, remind my colleagues that, I think it's, you know, it's always tempting to think about, well, let's push something down the road because next year looks better than this year. But from the earlier discussions we've had, I seem to recall that every single time that the council has done that, we've been wrong, okay? And what's happened is, the next year, something has happened, in, you know, invisible customers who weren't on the rolls show up, fuel prices spike, we instituted a new program and our share of allocable costs go up. So, that doesn't argue against doing it, I just would ask people to remember our track record, and that was one of the reasons why back in October, I was saying, I personally would prefer to do more of a pay-as-you-go thing, because it is so hard to predict the future.
And I agree with you, Mr. Olbert, I'm not trying to kick it down the road indefinitely, but I'm saying, we do have some, we've got some different things going on in 214 that are going to impact the rates, some are going to be to the good, and they'll help us out in, in these regards. So, I don't disagree with you there, but.
I understand.
Again, I'm, I'm looking at, right now, these kind of things, and.
And I would be, I would be willing to guarantee that if I went back and looked at the tapes from the earlier discussion, there were exact same things, oh, we, this thing is going to happen different next year, this thing is going to happen different next year. That's why they made the decision to push things forward.
The only thing we've ever said is, and Mr. Griselli has said this on a number of different rate increases, is rather than go with what staff was recommended, about 8%, if we try to smooth this out over a few years, we'll be in better shape and keep people happy.
Because of anticipating, anticipating better things happening the following year. I mean, I was here last year, I was in the audience, and that's, and that's my thought and what was said.
It's, it's a matter of, in my opinion, it's still smoothing, but if I could ask a question of Mr. Moore, and I know we have different numbers here, you have, the mayor has $295,000, we think it's $380,000, so let's just assume for a moment that we're right, what happens to the other 90,000? Where's that going to come out of?
I guess my question is, when you talk about the additional 90,000, are you projecting we're going to raise more than the mountain?
No, I'm just saying, if we did, if we adopted his rate structure, it only raises $295,000. The original 12, 12, 12, 12, 12 raises $380,000.
Right, and that's, that's where I was suggesting, we get at least some of that from the.
Well, I'm concerned that if I say, oh, Mr. Mayor, you're great, what happens to the other 90,000?
Well, I guess what I would say, and again, I'm, I'm still not clear why they're different numbers, is I was the one who calculated the mayor's table.
I know.
And they all come out to the same number.
It doesn't have, you know, Mr. Moore, I apologize, but even, even Mr. Grocot and I, never agree on anything, came up with the same numbers independently, so what can I tell you? You know, two to one, we beat you. My point is, if we're right, what happens to the other 90,000? That's my question.
And I guess my question is, are you saying we're 90,000 short, or are we saying 90,000?
Yes, on this thing, I should be 380,000. I've been saying that, but I don't seem to be getting anywhere with it.
Okay, well, if in fact, we're 90,000 short, that will roll over to the following year.
Actually, on that point, I had, on my rate structure, I was 56,000 short of the 382.
I'm pretty much, I'm pretty much done with, with trying to figure out numbers.
And to, well, to answer the question, that's, what, what's not shown on here is, again, I was thinking that we would take the 3.25% and increase it to five or six or something like that.
Right, and I think the answer to that, Mayor, just so you know, is because the number of people in San Carlos who have, attachment Q services is so low, we had to literally double that rate, that's why it says 100% instead of 3%. That's what we had to do to make those numbers work. Because, because your email said, make up the difference there, and so as we were working with the model this afternoon, that's how we did it.
Okay, all right.
All right, I have a question.
Okay, all right. Shortly, we need to come to some kind of motion.
Let me get brief. Mr. Moore, just looking at all three tables, all three options, plus the mayor's option, as we've come to call it, they all raise, Mr. Griselli's comments notwithstanding, do they all raise the same amount of money?
They do on my copy of VIXEL.
And they do on mine, too.
Okay.
Just different numbers, just different numbers.
All right, so it's just a matter on how we get there. Now, so, given that, is there, is there any particular reason why we shouldn't go with the mayor's option, seeing that it raises the, the 20-gallon rate the lowest amount? Or do we, do we again become sort of a, get victimized by our own generosity?
Right.
If I can call it generosity.
Let me, let me take this one, if I may. The, the options that we put together were based on the discussion that the council had at the last meeting when they elected to send the 218 notice out. And while there's nothing inherently wrong with what the mayor's proposing, it's really the opposite strategy than the one the council discussed a month or so ago. And the weaknesses I see in that strategy is that it actually compounds the existing problem of the imbalance in the rate structure. In other words, when you look up here, you can see, the 20-gallon and the 32-gallon containers have always been, and even under the staff proposal, would continue to be subsidized. Under the mayor's proposal, that subsidy would be even larger, it grows bigger. And at some point, regardless of whether it's this year, or next year, or whenever, that issue's going to have to be addressed, because the subsidy, when you're just using, even if you just apply the straight 12% across the board, it's causing the subsidy to grow larger. And over time, incrementally, that's what's caused this great divide in the rates. If you go back in time, if you're a 20-gallon person from 20 years ago, and a 96-gallon person from 20 years ago, the disparity wasn't as great. It's an artificial creation that, that's grown over time, and what we're recognizing, that now that the service delivery model has changed so significantly in terms of ease of service, that people are really migrating at, at a rate we've never seen before, in addition to, I think, just the, the overall green, environmentally friendly society that we're living into, and it's, it's wreaking havoc with the rates, where eventually, if you just imagine a world where everybody has a 20-gallon can except for one person with a 96-gallon, are we really going to say that we're going to take, you know, a majority of the rate increase and apply it to one person? It, it just doesn't work with extremes. At some point, this is going to have to be fixed. Doesn't have to be this year, but it has to be fixed.
That, that was what I was looking for, thank you.
And to the council, and especially to Mr. Olbert, because he's talking about kicking the can down the road. Still pushing for this, because, again, I'm looking at the response of most of these letters, a good many of them are retired folks, fixed income, and, and I know, you know, my mom's on a fixed income, I know, it's, it's not much money that you're getting. You're trying to live on, especially in this area, trying to live on a social security check, $600 a month, you got to be kidding me, I don't know how these people do it. So, I'm looking for a fix for this year. We can't, we, we can't write something fast enough to address senior citizens. If we're going to create a special rate to protect our seniors from these rate increases every year, we can't do that right now from the dais. We can do it for next year, and I'm all for it. Let's do it next year. Barring that, and because we can't do that, and trying to respond to these folks who've written these letters, that's why I propose this, this rate structure I did. Again, I want to repeat, I'm trying to create a bit of a sanctuary for our seniors to not get hit with as much of a rate increase. That's what I'm trying to do. You want to do a senior citizen rate for 2014 or 2013, yeah, 2014, let's do it. I'm all in agreement. And that's to all of Councilmembers, I'm looking at Mark, but.
And that's, that's a great sentiment, I think that's a really great idea to have. I think if we look at table number two, we've got table number three up here, and I know some of my colleagues have commented. some of my colleagues have commented that they're uncomfortable with there being a zero increase, that all of the size cans should get some kind of an increase. So if we look at table number two, the difference between what you're proposing, Mr. Mayor, and the $20.87 of table number two is $2.69 a month. I did that in my head, so it may be off a little bit. So in my mind, we're not looking at a huge amount. I know a fixed income is an issue, but $2.69 a month, and I think table two would be a good compromise. We're looking at, for a 20-gallon can, that those people would be being subsidized for 43% of the cost. Someone with a 64-gallon can would be paying 29% more than what it costs. The 96-gallon cans, they'd be paying 60, almost 65% more than what it costs. And I think to go above 65% of more, more than what it costs, and to tell people in our community, yes, you have to pay almost 80% more than what it costs to actually provide service to you, is excessive. I don't think that that's appropriate to do to those people. I don't think it means that they're not recycling, that they haven't made the right decisions about how they're handling their waste. So I think table two might be a compromise that, that works all the way around for us. I would be interested in knowing what the other council members feel.
Through the chair, may I make a motion?
I'd like to ask one more question, if I could.
Okay, ask your question.
Of staff, Mr. Moore or Mr. Malpe. If we go with table two, again, we raise the same amount of money, but are, do we end up, once again, encouraging more migration and thereby compounding our problem a year down the road?
Well, I think what I would say to you is, admittedly, we're sort of starting down the road of bringing the cost closer, the rates closer to what it really costs, although at a $1 to $2 surcharge, it's gonna take us a number of years to get there. I think what we said to the council in October, when you asked us to move forward with the surcharge concept, was that if we were to do, I think it was as much as $4 and $8, it would take us two to three years to make up the gap. Recognizing that some of the cities, you know, Hillsborough, the classic example, did it in one year, which I thought was way too fast. If you're going at the rate of a dollar or two a year, obviously it's gonna take us, you know, a number of years. But I think any movement in this direction, to Councilmember Clapper's point, is a good one, because you're beginning to move the rate closer to the actual cost. And I think it's also important to note, too, as the table shows, is that even if you were to eliminate the subsidies altogether, and I'm not necessarily suggesting that's where we'll land, you can see that there is sort of a natural differential there, because part of the rate, and I heard one of the council members say this earlier, part of the rate is the fixed cost of sending the trucks around, but the other part is based on the tonnage. And so it'll always be the case that 20-gallon service will be cheaper than the bigger can sizes. So there's a natural, you know, graduation in costs if you ever get close to cost per month. But to your question, Councilmember Collins, I think table two would be some measured progress, yes.
Can I ask a follow-up? Would it be possible to do, do something that would have the increases of table two, but have it all expressed as percentages, rather than having that term "surcharge" in there?
Got it. It's 20% on the 20 gallons, it's a 20.5% increase. On 32 gallons, it's 12.6% increase, and then it's eight and six.
Eight and six, right. Once again, we agree.
Better at half.
I'm gonna edit this.
Did that answer the question? Councilmember Clapper? I'm still just waiting to make my motion, that's all. I just wanna cut short the debate.
Yes, okay.
Okay. I move the council approve Resolution Number 2012-...
79.
And I'm gonna do this, and then, Mr. Rubens, you can explain to me what I did wrong, after you figure out what I'm doing. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving an increase in residential and commercial solid waste rates, amended so that Exhibit A reflects the calculations shown in staff report Table Two. Okay?
The main, the main issue, just to focus the council, is the 218 process does not allow you to increase the rates more than reflected in the notice, and those maximum rates are reflected on Attachment Three, is the way I'm seeing this. So that motion is not above that maximum.
That's right.
So it would satisfy 218.
That's right.
Oh, I second the motion.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
No.
Okay, we're done with head item. Does the council wish to have a break before we get into the hearing?
Yes, please.
Yes, please. Okay, we'll take, we'll adjourn until 9:30.
Thank you.
We can be finding our seats, please. Folks, can we be finding our seats, please?
All right. I'll only use my timer on the people other than the train.
I got that.
He wanted to aggregate some time.
Yeah.
All right. Now, we're back on for the public hearing on the Transit Village. And we've got, first, the presentations to continue by Mr. Black, Mr. Canepa, and Mr. Shields, and Pete Krasnoff.
I don't know how to get it to the other screen.
So, we'll have them give their presentations. Hopefully, that won't be too long. And then, we'll go into comments from the public. I'll let you know right now while these guys are setting up. So, if you're going to speak tonight, you're not going to be necessarily on a timer. I've been up here long enough to have a pretty good feel for what two minutes sounds like. But kind of keep your eyes up here a little bit. So, if I start to do this, that means wrap it up. I am going to give one person from the East Side who's with the East Side Neighborhood Association. He's got some technical stuff he wants to share with us. I'm going to let him go a little bit long, but not too long. And I anticipate we'll be out of here at 11:00. If we don't finish up, that's okay. We anticipated probably not finishing up tonight or making a decision. If we have to put this on the agenda for another meeting, that's fine. And I don't think any of us want to be in here past 11:00 o'clock. So, that's what's going on for the rest of the evening. And I see Mr. Black. He's ready to go.
I am. Gary Black with Hexagon Transportation Consultants. We did the traffic study for the project that is in the EIR. You've seen the site plan before. Let's see, do I have a little arrow there? I just wanted to point out here that where the driveways are. So, this is the part that's north of Holly. There's two driveways on this part, right there and there. And then, on the part that's between Holly and San Carlos, there are two driveways, one there and there. And then, there's also two driveways on the part that's south of San Carlos Avenue. And so, there's driveway here at Cherry and then at Arroyo.
What was that last one? You said you kind of fell off there. Arroyo.
Olive.
I love Olive. Olive, okay.
I don't know how to go back on this. Just right-click? Yeah, okay. So, I think you're all aware that the project would move the transit access from the current location right here, would move it down to Cherry, where there would be a new traffic signal installed. And the buses would come in here and then circle around. And there's the bus area right generally in here. Also, that's the drop-off area, drop-off and pickup for the passengers. We did a traffic impact analysis for this project where we look at traffic at San Carlos intersections, also traffic added to the freeway, traffic added to interchanges. But I'm focusing here on the San Carlos intersections. And this is a diagram that shows the level of service on the left with the project. The project would not have any significant impacts by itself as defined by the city. But, whoops, where'd my little arrow go? Anyway, there it is. Under cumulative conditions, and we heard before about what is included in cumulative conditions, we would have a deficiency here at the intersection of El Camino and Holly. It shows two dots because it's also the intersection of Old County and Holly. But as you know, those work together as a system with one controller. And we would have a level of service, in our parlance, level of service D, but it would be above the city threshold. So, the EIR identifies a significant, or that the project would contribute to a significant cumulative impact at that location. You might notice that we also have some deficiencies identified here at Holly and Industrial, Britton and Industrial. Those have been identified before in other planning studies that you may have seen. But in this particular case, the project itself would not have a significant impact at those locations. So, it'd be the other development that's included in cumulative. The EIR discusses mitigation for the impact at El Camino and Holly. And what it discusses is implementation of the TDM goals, that's Transportation Demand Management goals, that the city has adopted, to achieve a 20% reduction in traffic generation from future projects. This cumulative analysis that I'm presenting does not include that reduction. But if you are able to achieve that reduction in the developments that happen from now into the future, then that impact would be mitigated. And we did assume that the TDM goals were met by this particular project. When I say that the mitigation is meeting the TDM goals, that's...
Excuse me? TDM?
Transportation Demand Management.
Thank you.
Which is a sys...
I know what it is. I just want everybody else to know what it is.
Thank you. So, we're talking about applying that to all future development. Oh, so, there's my slide on what the TDM measures are that are part of the project as proposed. You can see them listed there, transit passes, parking pricing, various other services to promote walking, bicycling, carpooling. We can go over some of these in more detail if you have any questions about what they are. But I think you've probably heard of parking, of unbundling parking and parking cash-out before. That's paying people basically not to use a parking space or not charging for parking. We're not talking about charging for parking for the project. What we're talking about is renting the parking separately from the units.
But, Mr. Black, can you, on the third one, though, priced employee parking, is that not paying for parking? How does that work?
Oh, well, that would be in the... Well, there's a couple of different ways to do that. And there'll be a whole parking presentation after me. So, it could be in the parking garages, shared with the residents, or it could be in the Caltrain lot where there's a charge for parking now.
That's going to be explained a little bit more later, you say?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Now, I'm going to talk about another project that's part of the EIR, but is not part of the project. It was included in the cumulative analysis because it's a project that the city has asked us to look at, and it's in the EIR. And it's a little bit confusing. So, that's why I wanted to explain that. There's some confusion about whether this is project mitigation. It's not project mitigation. The project does not have significant impacts that require this to be done. But this is an idea to improve pedestrian and bicycle circulation between San Carlos Avenue and the train station. And that's, as I said, that's included in the traffic study. And the concept here is that San Carlos Avenue, which right now has two lanes in the east direction, would be reduced to one lane. The traffic would peel off at Walnut to use Holly Street to get to Holly Street instead of using San Carlos Avenue, where right now it does this. This is just depicting the possibility of having a better pedestrian crossing in front of the station. That's not a definite project. We haven't talked to Caltrans about putting in pedestrian phasing in front of the station, but it's a possibility. Because you'd be eliminating this leg over here. So, you kind of have some, what we call free green time there. No cars, but you could use it for pedestrians. So, this just shows how this would lay out on San Carlos Avenue with a left-turn lane going on to Walnut and a signal with a left-turn arrow. And then, here's the continuation past Laurel Street and down in this section where here you could, by eliminating one of the lanes, you could increase the width of the sidewalk, and you could also put in a bike lane. So, you could have bikes go all the way up to the station. They would have to get across El Camino, but they could push the button and go across with the light. So, that's to improve the pedestrian and bicycle access to the station. This is, this one here goes over here. See, it says match line? It's one long strip that's just cut in two pieces. Another idea that's part of this whole system to improve the access for pedestrians would be to eliminate one of the two right-turn lanes that go from El Camino on to Holly Street, because the idea is you're going to move the traffic over on Walnut over to Holly. So, it would be coming this way instead of coming up like this. Right now, there's two right-turn lanes there. It's a little difficult for pedestrians to cross right there because of the two right-turn lanes. And then, also, a possibility is eliminating the left turn here at Holly Street and making a wider median, which could also be done to improve the pedestrian crossing. There are not very many cars that turn left at Holly Street because they just went past San Carlos Avenue. And if they want to come into downtown, they tend to turn at San Carlos Avenue instead of going up to Holly. So, that's another possibility. And then, this just shows how you might stripe the intersection at Walnut and Holly Street to facilitate the movements back and forth. And again, this is something that's, it's not a done deal. It's just an idea, and it's in the EIR, in the cumulative analysis. So, the traffic study analyzes what would happen if you do this and came to the conclusion that this would actually work in terms of not causing unreasonable congestion or exceeding the city standards.
Mr. Black, are you suggesting, then, that, you said this is in the EIR?
Yes.
It's in the cumulative mitigations?
It's not a mitigation. It's a project under cumulative.
Okay. So, it's not, but it's not proposing to mitigate any...
Not proposing to mitigate any impacts. And the cumulative analysis is done with and without this, so...
So, it's in there because, why?
It's in there because it could be said to be closely related to the project in that it's addressing transportation issues with regard to access to the station area. And so, if you wanted to pursue these ideas, which would be independent of the project, they would work together with the project to create much better pedestrian and bicycle access to the station. The project itself gets you a lot, gets you some of the way there by moving the station access down to Cherry and not having a road in front of the station or parking lot. So, that's why it's in there.
I think you have a question over here.
Yeah, I'd like to tag along on the mayor's question. So, I understand that this concept isn't intended to mitigate something. But it sounds like it would improve a situation. That was what I'm keying off of is your statement a few seconds ago, that the project as it stands gets us a certain level of improvement in terms of pedestrian flow. This gets us more.
Yes.
But it's not mitigating a problem, it's just improving a situation?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
I think you had a question over here.
And I think...
Sorry, that's the end.
Are we done?
A black screen. I'm done, yeah.
But those improvements are what are, were previously in the list of mitigations and are now part of the list of improvements. Is that correct? No, they're not. Okay, some of them sounded like they were similar to this TR-4.
Yes, they are. That's where it gets a little bit confusing.
So, some of them are listed here, but some of what you said is not listed here.
Yeah, what's listed there is the, this. This project is listed there, it's TR-4, which is to remove one of the right-turn lanes, widen the sidewalk along El Camino, and then widen the median at El Camino and Holly.
And eliminate a left-hand turn lane, too?
That would eliminate the left turn, yeah.
So, we'd lose two functions there, one of the right turns and the left turn altogether.
Yeah, if you did the whole thing. I mean, you could do just one.
One or the other.
Or the other.
Yeah.
But the idea of eliminating one of the right-turn lanes is that if, we're trying to move the traffic off of San Carlos Avenue on to Holly at Walnut. So, there won't be so many cars that are coming up El Camino and turning right on to Holly. Instead, they'll be coming straight across on Holly right here. They'll be going like this. So, you don't need the two right-turn lanes. Arguably, you might not even need the right-turn lanes now, but that's another discussion that we could have. But we have, you know, we have to pay attention to the queuing length because there's not that much space between Holly and San Carlos Avenue. And the idea for the left turn is simply that there are not very many cars that do that. There's like 40 cars in an hour or something like that. It's pretty small. So, you're not going to be inconveniencing very many people if you do that. So, it's, again, it's an idea. It's in the EIR. If you wanted to do it, you have an EIR that covers it, so...
But some of what you are showing us up here is not in the EIR. If I understand what you were saying.
It's all in the EIR.
All in the EIR, but it's not all necessarily in the list of improvement measures?
Correct. Because that's a list of impacts and mitigation. But it's carefully worded that this is not even listed as a mitigation of an impact. It's more listed as, this would be a nice thing to do...
Just an improvement, right, okay.
To improve pedestrian access to the site.
Okay.
Yeah. So, that was all I was going to present, but I can answer questions about other aspects of the traffic study or...
Yeah, I've got a question and I think there's some others up here. For a change of pace, let's go over to Mr. Collins.
All right. Just a quick clarification. Did I hear you say that there's only about 40 turns, is it an hour, from northbound El Camino on to Holly Street?
Yeah, but that was off the top of my head, so let me look up the real number.
Could be like those garbage numbers.
Left turn going up Holly, right.
Yeah.
Ten of them are garbage trucks.
While I'm looking that up, do you have any more questions?
I have to admit, I rarely turn left on Holly, but just surprising, I thought there would be more.
I've overstated, it's 20.
Really?
20.
Okay.
20 in the afternoon, in an hour. No.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Ober.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, just a bit of a technical question. When we're doing the trip analysis, I know there's discussion in the documentation about one of the benefits of transit-oriented development is it puts less trips out onto the road because people are using mass transit. In thinking about that, I was wondering, does the analysis distinguish between the impact on what I'll call sort of work-related trips and non-work-related trips? Because I guess what I'm getting at is I can easily see transit service impacting the work-related trips. But if you live in San Carlos, I mean, even in the Transit Village, I'd be very surprised if most of the residents will do their sort of ordinary shopping and stocking of their homes using mass transit. They're going to use cars. So, is the analysis that sensitive or...
Yes, it is that sensitive. It's also important to remember that it's not just the transit proximity that's a benefit of this location, if you will. The other benefit is being so close to downtown San Carlos where there are shopping opportunities, recreational opportunities, even job opportunities that are within walking distance. So, that's part of the reason that, I guess, usually transit-oriented development is a package of things. So, it's partly because there's a transit station there, but also the most successful ones have a mix of uses. And so, there's not just a single use there, but there's a mix, and you can walk to things.
Fair enough. I guess the main thing I want to make sure of, though, is that the analysis is, I don't know whether one would look at it on a per capita basis or not, but is assuming that the per capita rate of non-work-related trips is higher than for the work-related trips. Because I agree with you on those benefits, but it's not, I wouldn't think it's a complete offset. I mean, as nice as shopping on Laurel Street is, you know, it's hard to go to the hardware store there.
Well, it's not a complete offset. And transit-oriented development generates a lot less trips than non-transit-oriented development. But in this case, you have vacant lots. And so, even transit-oriented development generates more traffic than a vacant lot.
The other question I had, maybe something that council wants to weigh in on, but let me just tee it up here. My understanding is that when we do it, when the EIR is done and we're identifying things that are mitigations, that there has to be, in order to have a tight result, I guess I'll call it, one that's not as subject to challenge, you have to be reasonably specific about what the mitigation is that's coming out of the analysis. And the reason I'm bringing this up here is, it wasn't clear to me when I was reading the EIR that, you know, it talks about potentially doing signalization of a couple of intersections and that the applicant would pay a pro, you know, an appropriate share of that. That struck me as being a little vague, probably appropriate to the level, you know, the level of the analysis. And I'm wondering whether or not that's sufficiently specific that we're not running a risk of having this vagueness be a source of attack on it. You understand what I'm getting at? Okay.
I know.
Oh. Well, I'm not sure what I would say. My understanding was that in order for, in order to be able to clearly and without risks, undue risk of challenge, be able to say, thou must, you know, applicant, you must do X, that you have to be reasonably clear about what X is. You can't say, oh, yeah, you're going to cause some kind of problem and you're going to have to pay for that down the road. And first of all, I want to make sure that that's, maybe I've misread things, but the other is, is the standard that we have achieved in this analysis, which is more than the very vague comment I just made, but not as specific as, yes, you're going to pay 37% of signalizing this intersection. Is that sufficient? What kind of risk does it present for us?
Okay, got it. Is that it? Questions?
I might help. I think this discussion, it's mitigation measure TR-6.1, which is contribute towards the signalization of Walnut and Holly and Laurel and Holly. And the same mitigation was included in the Wheeler Plaza EIR. So, it's a very analytic consideration of the number of trips that are contributed relative to the background of city trips that each of those developments' proportion would be based upon, as I understand it.
Maybe it's just a drafting thing, because actually, what you just read, Deborah, was exactly what made me wonder whether it was too vague, because it didn't spell out sort of a precise thing. Maybe the precision is in the backup analysis someplace that's not in there.
Once we figure out how much a signal costs and what the proportional share is for trips generated to that intersection from each of these projects, that we will maybe potentially ask to help pay for it.
And don't we have to know that before we can really assign a mitigation to somebody? That's another way of phrasing my question.
I don't think so.
Well, I think the issue on traffic is, it's under cumulative conditions, if I'm not mistaken, where this is coming up. And the way we've done it in the past is we impose a fee to address the cost of the proportionate share on the cumulative impact scenario. So, that's how we would do it.
Will we know what the fee is before we vote on the EIR?
There's a formula, and it's in our, I think it's in our municipal code, how we set the traffic impact fee.
I may follow up with you offline on that, but that's fine. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Black, I just, one thing's confused me throughout this, and I thought I heard a partial explanation, but I need some help with this. The EIR talks about this 22.5% trip reduction. And then, it also talks about traffic, correct me if I'm wrong, generated by this project will represent... will represent 22% of the total traffic growth. Do I understand that correctly?
That's a coincidence that they're both 22%, and that's where the confusion comes from.
Well, I understand that they're different numbers. I just don't, I don't understand how a project generates 22% of the growth, yet the project reduces traffic by 22.5%. Or am I not understanding the trip reduction? Is that something that we're hoping happens over the future?
Well, the, maybe the best way to explain it is that if the TDM program that the project is proposing, and that is fact required now by your municipal code, so that 22% still leaves 78% of the traffic out there. And that 78% represents, you know, traffic, real traffic growth.
Right.
And that 78% is what contributes to the growth in the future by which the 22% is calculated. Does that make sense? Well, it's confusing because the numbers are the, the percentages are the same number.
Let's, let's just, for a moment, we'll forget about the 22% of the traffic growth. Let's just concentrate on the 22.5% trip reduction.
Yes.
We're adding approximately 400 residents, give or take, 450?
I think it's 500.
500, okay, let's call it 500. We're adding 500 people with this project. And do we, how do we achieve a 22% trip reduction by adding 500 people in the neighborhood?
Well, the reduction is compared to if you didn't do anything. But we're, we are adding traffic to the area because right now those are vacant lots. So they're not, there's no traffic.
Right.
So if we build something, then we will be increasing the traffic. The 22.5% reduction is compared to if you didn't have a TDM program, you didn't have any parking management, you didn't encourage people to ride bikes, any of that stuff.
And you had some other project there that...
And you had some other project there, then it would generate X number of trips. This one generates 22% less than X because it has all these programs.
That clarifies it. Thank you.
Kind of. Yeah, I know. I had a question. I was waiting for everybody else to get done. The thing that I'm wanting to know an answer on is, years ago, we closed the full intersections we had at Olive and I think Cherry, two. And then, so those were closed entirely by putting a median through. And my understanding at the time, I was pretty new on the council when that happened, but my understanding of it was that it had to do with the grade separation and the queuing up of traffic under the railroad bridge that goes over at Holly. Between, you mentioned the intersection, how Old County and El Camino work together. My understanding at the time, I could be wrong, but my understanding at the time was that we needed to do that to get traffic, especially going, what is that, southbound on El Camino, to move out of the way. Because as people come through that intersection, they got to have someplace to go. A few cross over onto Holly, but many make the turn. You watch the traffic go through there and most of them are making the turn and heading down El Camino. And to prevent back up into those queue lanes, we adjusted those intersections. Now we're talking about making them full intersections again. So how do we solve, you know, we're going to create the problem that we solved by closing the intersection. It just, you know, does not make sense to me at all. And where it makes me go with this whole thing is, I'm really looking, you know, I can appreciate some of these other projects you were talking about that are not part of the mitigation, but my concern is looking at the cumulative effect, like I said earlier, about we got PAMF going on, we got Wheeler Plaza possibly happening, we got this possibly happening. And the cumulative impact on traffic in a situation that's already not the greatest, when you especially look at Holly Street, and I'm thinking in other parts of the downtown too, even if you go the other way, you touched on it a little bit with San Carlos Avenue. If you watch San Carlos Avenue in the morning, it starts backing up sometimes when people are trying to get to work. So we've already got a traffic problem. We're going to add 500 more residents with this project, how many with Wheeler. I just see a real issue here and I'm thinking, you know, what we really need here is a full circulation study. And I'm not sure one's been done. I know we keep talking about, well, we did an EIR for the general plan and the potential build-out, but I don't know. I'm not seeing it and I feel uncomfortable about that.
I can say that the city has done many long-range studies and looking at this in a more comprehensive fashion, not just one project at a time. And the issue that you talk about is exactly on the minds of everyone in this area about how's this all going to work. There's a lot of traffic there already. You've got closely spaced intersections and cars are turning and you've got signals that are working together as a system at Old County and El Camino. It's very complex. It's a very complex area. And so we actually created what in our world we call a traffic simulation, which is a computer program where you can, you see little cars going down the street in real time to show how they back up and how they go through the intersection and how long the queue is and lights turning red and green and so forth. That simulation is on your city website and I didn't bring it tonight to show you, but if the council would like, I mean, we can come back and show that simulation, because there's only like one minute, the files are huge, so there's only one minute of it that's on your website. But you can go on the city website and look at one minute of it and see what was actually done to address this very issue that you're raising about how's this all going to work? How's this all going to fit together? And so that has been done and has been looked at and it's a combination of some of these ideas of getting the traffic over to Holly Street sooner, because it's more efficient to run them straight down Holly Street than to bring them up El Camino and have them turn right, because of the way the signal timing works out there. And so that's part of it. Part of it is better signal coordination between San Carlos Avenue and Holly Street. Part of it is eliminating the leg coming out of the station, because that has an effect on how the light works at San Carlos Avenue. So it's kind of a combination of all those things.
Mr. Black, it's been done, but it's not part of the EIR, correct?
It's described in words in the EIR.
It's not completely linked to the EIR, is my point.
The description of the analysis that I'm talking about is in the EIR, but the visuals are not in the EIR. The visuals are kind of recreate, I mean, it's kind of hard to put
Sure.
A movie into a printed document, but it's on the city website.
I just wanted to tag along with that. I think what we're trying to get at, at least I know what I'd like to know, is, is the analysis, the thinking and the recommendations that come out of the simulation, is that integrated into the EIR, into this EIR?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Okay. And it informs the things you showed us a little while ago and maybe some other stuff as to things that need to be mitigated, things that are improvements, et cetera?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I guess I'm still left a little confused, because some of the other projects, I would think the other projects that you mentioned, these road improvement plans, you said are not, they're options that future councils and city staff could look at doing, but they're not intended to be mitigation measures.
They're not mitigation measures for this project.
For this project?
For cumulative, they are.
I thought you said earlier they were not. You said some of these road improvement projects are in the cumulative, how did I put it? Cumulative impact.
Mm-hmm.
Where did I put that?
Well, this is, yeah.
They were, you said they were part of the cumulative study.
They're part of the cumulative study.
But they're not recommended as mitigation measures for anything. They're just in there.
Well, they are. That's where it gets a little bit...
Please clear this up.
Yeah.
Please.
I know. It's very confusing. So it's in, let's see, it's where Deborah was reading to you on TR 6.1. That's mitigation for cumulative traffic that the project would contribute to if the city wanted to do it. Another way to mitigate cumulative impacts is to enforce your 20% TDM reduction, and that would mitigate the cumulative impacts as well. So there's a couple of different ways to do it. And this whole system of improvements would work, but so would the 20% reduction.
Okay. I'm sufficient with your answer, because now it gives me a place to, I missed it when I was reading through. Now I know where to look and how to find it. So it's good enough.
Yeah.
And we're going to be back here again, so I'm letting you off the hook at that point. Any other questions for Mr. Black? One more down here, okay.
One other, Mr. Black. I just, I didn't see it in there, but is there a signal planned for El Camino and Oak, which would be the northern end of the project, any electric signal?
No.
And you, there, you don't think they'll need one?
No, we don't think they're, we looked at having a signal there and whether a signal would be beneficial, but we determined that a signal there would not be beneficial.
Is that because the driveway, the northernmost driveway doesn't come out there?
Right. It doesn't align with Oak.
Oh, it doesn't?
No, it doesn't.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you. All right. So I think next one, I have Brian Canepa with a parking discussion.
Okay.
Good evening. One moment while I queue up the other PowerPoint. Slideshow. All right, and good evening. Again, I'm Brian Canepa from Nelson Nygaard Transportation Consultants, and tonight I'll be talking about parking at TODs and a few elements of it. Starting first with where parking requirements come from, a little bit about kind of the background data that makes up parking requirements, what actual demand looks like at TODs, and then how does that relate to the specific development? How does all this data kind of wrap into it? So in terms of looking at parking requirements and what's kind of fed into the EIR, at least in terms of the data, a lot of it's drawn from the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Parking Generation Manual, which is cited here in the lower left. This is an industry standard manual for parking, but there are some caveats that come along with it. For example, their definition of suburban is not oftentimes what people commonly think as suburban. So suburban in this context for ITE is very specific. It means very limited walkability. It means very limited transit access. It means that this project setting is actually not suburban, according to ITE. And it's actually would be considered, quote, urban, even though that, you know, might not be necessarily the first word that comes to mind for many of us. But when ITE looks at parking data, they look at a whole range of sites and find that some, for example, suburban office are as low as .86 spaces per thousand square feet, somewhere as high as 5.58. Many communities end up establishing a requirement for four spaces per thousand square feet, just as an example. Similarly, for multifamily residential, they'd provide a range within their manual. And as a side note, ITE, you know, data analysis was fed into the EIR. This is why this is, I'm bringing this up. But the range and demand ranges from anywhere about .6 spaces per unit to about almost two spaces per unit. And typically, a lot of cities fall in the range of a space and a half to three spaces per unit, which as you can see, again, exceeds the actual amount of demand generated by these sorts of uses. And the tricky part about ITE is that this is really sort of development that it's designed to gauge well. So if you build a big box retail or strip malls in this fashion, ITE will do a good job at accurately representing that parking demand. Unfortunately, it doesn't do us quite a good job in trying to ascertain parking demand for mixed-use districts and TODs. It tends to overestimate the parking demand there. So, you know, what does parking demand actually look like at TODs and what does actual data show from those areas? Unfortunately, there are some studies out there that are local to TODs in the Bay Area. And I would just note that although these are called TODs, hence transit-oriented developments, many of them are actually what we would not consider transit-oriented. They're much more transit-adjacent, which is not the same thing. You could have a development, for example, that is relatively close to transit, yet supplies lots of parking, has very poor pedestrian connections to the transit station, and you'll end up with many people still driving their cars, simply because that connection to the transit station was not established very well. But generally speaking, in the East Bay and San Clara County, you can see, at least this is just residential, peak parking demand was about 1.2 to about 1.3 spaces per unit. And these were the sites for the East Bay TODs. And I would note too, on this side slide, that although these are great data points, this is also BART, which does have some differences between commuter rail. So for example, residents, employees often travel in a similar fashion on commuter rail as they do on BART, but visitors do not. There's not that same high-frequency service throughout the day. So although I'm showing you this data, it's not a perfect apples-to-apples comparison for the East Bay. But this is generally the range of data points that you'll see from developments in different parts of, in different parts of the study. A more similar example, where studies that were done as part of the TOD analysis in San Clara County that included both light rail stations as well as commuter rail. And what they found from that was that your parking demand was about 1.3 spaces per unit on average. Parking supply was much higher. And actually, what they found at many of those sites was that on average you had about, almost a quarter of the spaces were empty at peak hour, simply because there was an oversupply of parking there. On the commercial side, you know, I've decided to pull intentionally some communities from around the state. This is actually data that was collected by my firm or firms we've worked with, and we actually hold a database of it in our office. But I wanted to illustrate the fact that mixed-use commercial parking demand actually tends to be very similar regardless of where you are across the state. So what this graph illustrates is a few different things. One, you have a typical code requirement. Along the axis here, you have spaces per thousand square feet. Typical code requirement, many cities require about four spaces per thousand square feet. ITE, a lot of times for commercial, will say that something is about three spaces per thousand square feet. Again, that's a very suburban, again, very, quote, suburban use that has very little transit access and poor walkability. IT also doesn't account for any sort of TDM, transportation demand management that comes up. You have the requirement here in San Carlos, and then you have other actual demand, parking demand occupancy figures that were collected from other communities. And you'll see that they all generally fall about 1.5 to 2 spaces per thousand square feet. And that's very typical, actually, and I can cite many more cities that actually have that same thing in mixed-use areas. You go out to a big box retail, that's not going to be the case. But if you're in a mixed-use area, you actually have these sorts of ratios, despite the fact that many of them actually do continue to have high drive-alon rates. You still have quite a few people driving. And in only one of these cases, actually, is there a train. Most of the other places have bus access only, which helps, but is not as good as rail in many cases. But in terms of how parking, commercial parking demand is used, and I think I'm going to, on this slide, I'm going to try to answer some of the questions that came up a few hours ago, for those who remember about this. But the differences in parking demand and how different user groups park is very important to this particular development. I'll start with employees, for example. Employees tend to have a higher rate of transit use and they'll also tend to walk further to and from their vehicles. If you think about a user who's using parking, the longer you're coming to stay or be there, the longer you're willing to park. If you're a commuter and you're going to be parked there for eight, 10 hours at a time, you'll walk further. If you're a retail user and you say, well, I'm going to be parked here for 20 minutes, I don't want to walk half a mile to my car, that makes perfect sense. Typically, people do not do that. And so what we find when it comes to walking behavior from people's cars or accessing cars. transit stations is that typically residents, employees, and commuters are the ones who will walk the furthest distance. Typically, retail customers who are making quick trips will have, will be much less prone to walk that much further. Another interesting aspect of this that relates to this TOD in particular is that in terms of travel behavior, and it's kind of an oddity of human psychology, is that people will walk, in a typical transit-oriented development, you have what we call a catchment area. And many TODs are planned with a half-mile catchment area, because that research has shown in many cases, actually, you have, you're able to draw quite a few people within that half-mile who do walk to the station and commute from there. But what's interesting about it is that you'll have people who are very apt to walk, you know, a quarter mile, half mile to the station. On the opposite end, they will not normally walk another half mile. So they're very prone to walk a further distance on that first leg of the journey, so to speak. In terms of visitor access, visitors are generally more apt to drive, right? Because, I mean, they might be carrying supplies, they might be making a quick trip, a quick trip, et cetera. And in terms of parking behavior among visitors, you get a range. You get those who, I mean, we typically call bargain hunters, who, they don't mind parking a little further away, and they, and because they don't want to pay for parking. And so sometimes they'll, you know, sneak in, sometimes, you know, that's why you do have spillover parking occasionally into neighborhoods. And then opposite that, you do have visitors who will pay for the convenience or even the time limit to park closer to individual uses. So from this particular development, you probably get a bit of a range. You probably have some people who want to be right there at the front door and have the opportunity, some people might park further away. And generally, in terms of the, even though I don't have it on here, in terms of residents, because I know that question came up before, I believe the question was, I'll refresh my memory, it was the furthest distance on the north, and so, and if you told me correctly, it was 1,500 feet? Okay. So the furthest residence from the north and northern end of the station was 1,500 feet, which is roughly just over a quarter mile, which equates to about a five-minute walk, which is well within the catchment area for people walking the transit. That would not be necessarily deterrent for transit users. In terms of then, oh, and last, in terms of walking to.
The older new station?
This would, that would be the new station? Is that the new station?
The North Stair?
I believe.
North Stair.
The North Stairs on the existing?
On the existing.
It would be the existing station and depending on how, it's between a quarter and a third of a mile.
Okay.
To an entrance to the platform.
Yeah. It within, that's within the existing station.
The further south.
The further south. As a side note to walking behavior, too, it's actually kind of fascinating. Humans, for whatever reason, will hit a certain limit, and it's actually falls within that quarter to a third of a mile in what they call kind of the indifference zone. People actually won't notice that much of a time difference in there. So you'll see roughly the same number of people willing to walk about a quarter mile as they will a third of a mile. And then once you breach that, normally half mile, though, then it can steadily drop off. At that point, people have perceived it to be a long distance. It's interesting how that happens. So just some real quick conclusions here in looking at how this data is used. Again, ITE has a rate of about 1.0, not about, exactly 1.2 cars per unit. The data itself actually shows that falls pretty much right within the range of what you'd expect, although you do have some areas where you do have quite a few residents who are parking, continue to park their cars, and are taking transit during the day. In terms of the, quote, suburban ITE rate, it well exceeds normally what we see, what's actually observed as commercial parking demand. Now, in this particular project, and I'll get to a second, I mean, the residential parking demand is a much greater component of the commercial parking demand, but it's still important to note. So in terms of the parking ratios themselves, and I'll explain this diagram because I know it's not necessarily intuitive right off the bat, is on the axis here, you have the number of spaces per thousand square feet in terms of parking ratio. The first bar is the actual ratio of residential parking provided. The second is what is the requirement in the EIR. The third is what ITE calculates it at. And the fourth here, TOD, is what the empirical data from the TOD studies show. And the same thing goes for the commercial side of it as well. Now, these parking ratios are, again, are useful in this context, but they don't really tell you about the project. So instead, I translated them to number of spaces, which is, I think, a metric more people can relate to. So, for example, here, the number of resident spaces being proposed is roughly 430, I have to go back and check the number exactly, which is 57 spaces greater than the requirement in the EIR, and about nine, no, about exactly 95 spaces. That's higher than both what ITE would say, as well as empirical data, local empirical data would say. On the commercial side, the spaces are about 23 to 30 spaces short from the actual provision of parking compared to what the EIR states as a requirement, as well as what ITE says. But when you compare it to the actual empirical data that you see from the Bay Area, it's actually, I mean, nine spaces, it's within the margin of error, but you have a slight surplus. So it's actually the same ballpark, and it's actually pretty, pretty, pretty right on there. And so the last conclusions I would draw from this, I think, are, you know, in looking at the parking for this particular site, it's really in, I believe, and maybe staff can speak to this, because I think a few items have changed since my last presentation at Planning Commission, but it's not so much in the supply of spaces that's important, because there are sufficient number of spaces. It's how it's managed that's very important here. So, for example, in many cases, you'll have businesses, and they do this everywhere, will encourage their employees to park somewhere else, somewhere free and somewhere else in order to free up spaces for their own retail users or whoever it happens to be. And it's important to be able to have, you know, employee parking, some employee parking plan in place for this development. And I think there's a great opportunity there to share, quote, share spaces with the residents that are there, so that when residents, not every single resident space, but many of the spaces, while residents are away during the day, employees can make use of those spaces and not park elsewhere. And that is it. I'm happy to field questions. I know I threw quite a bit of data at you.
Okay. We can entertain questions for about five minutes, and then we'll need a motion to carry on. Okay, so, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two quick questions. Are you familiar with the Hacienda project in San Carlos?
I am not.
Okay. Well, I'll just leave it as a question. I don't know if I saw the stat in the EIR. It's a higher-density housing opportu, facility that is, well, not right next to the railway station, is actually closer to the railway station than where we are right now, so it's transit-associated, let's say. I would be interested in knowing, if we don't know already, what the ratio of residents to parking is there? Just because to me, that would be the, a good metric to use, you know, for San Carlos-specific situations. The other question I had is, I'm not, I was unclear about why there would be a transit effect for commercial parking need, a transit-oriented development effect for commercial parking spaces. You showed that last chart where it was, right. I'm having a hard time understanding why something, why a retail store or commercial operation being at a transit-oriented development is having a significant impact on the amount of parking spaces it needs, particularly for retail.
Sure. No, absolutely. I would say there's actually a few, a few answers here. One is that you also have to remember as part of why these sorts of things have lower parking demand is because in a mixed-use area, you actually have people walking, and you are actually in a mixed, this is in a mixed-use area. It's in close proximity enough to the downtown that people can walk between the two. So that would be my first answer. Two is that with commercial, even if you're retail, about 20, and I should have mentioned this earlier, about 20% of your parking demand for retail is employees. So they still, they still comprise a, at least a fifth of the parking demand associated with it. With offices, they comprise about 90%. Obviously, it's much greater. So TDM programs have far, are far more easy to implement and have a profound effect on offices than they are on retail. So, again, yes, I mean, there is, there are ways to have this effect. And also, in an area like a transit-oriented development, not only are you sharing, a lot of times, essentially sharing parking between two businesses or multiple businesses, but, you know, simply about people walking and taking transit. Again, as I mentioned earlier, it's not likely many visitors here will take transit. If people, if people associated with retail do take transit, they'll likely be employees.
Well, and yes, and one of my potential concerns here is, in fact, exactly that, that some of those sites that you were showing might very well have been in places that have a higher density or higher urban density, if you will, and so I could see more walk-in type stuff than I would expect in San Carlos, so.
Well, just to answer, to kind of go ask your, answer your question, most of the sites, actually, that even in the East Bay TODs as well as the South Bay, a lot of them are actually about half a mile from the station. They were not very, very walkable areas. I doubt that the, I have to go back and actually look at the data. I don't remember off the top of my head if their alternative mode access was very good. So if you looked at the drive-alone rate versus walking and biking, the drive-alone rate, I would be willing to bet, is still pretty high. That said, yes, I mean, I definitely agree with you that the visitor demand here is largely still going to be driving-based, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions over here?
I was wondering about the retail and the office buildings. You have all these great charts with all these numbers and everything, but when I started actually looking at the plans of where things are located, and it, the retail and the office has very little parking around it. So I, is there, what is the assumption of where folks would park? They're going to have to do that shared parking in the residential spaces underneath the buildings, or what's going to happen?
I'm wondering, since I wasn't part of the EIR team, maybe I'll have staff answer that.
Sure. The, there are 19 spaces between the commercial building and the depot, and that has designated spaces for retail and office all day long, and then it says there are some that are shared. It's either nine or 10 are shared for residential, that presumes at night. And there's another 47, I believe, in the front end of the multimodal center, which are timed parking short term, and those could be used for customers to come. The Planning Commission had a very similar discussion, and the improvement measure that they have suggested kind of is a model that we used on 1001 Laurel Project, where there is employee parking in a designated area in the residential parking garages, because the employee parking, as we know, even in the downtown, is, can be a significant issue. And the interest is, is to get them to park, because they're there longer to get them to park in the locations that are further away from the employment center than their visitors need parking. So we have 19 spaces plus 47 spaces available on short term for the commercial properties, which we think is sufficient.
Hey, we can't go any further. We need a motion to.
And then regarding Pacific Hacienda, we don't have that number, but it is overparked. So there, I'm thinking it's 20, 20% more parking than is required.
Okay. I don't.
It's 10:29 right now.
One more answer, you better make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move. We extend our meeting until 11:00 PM.
Hi, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, carry on for 30 minutes. Okay. Sufficient answers on the parking? Or is there more?
I'm happy to wait for staff to get me the answer. I don't, you know, don't need it tonight.
Okay. Just one comment, if I would, to staff on this. You mentioned the 1001 El Camino, and I've been down there a number of times of late because my brokerage firm moved into that building. They're the only commercial in that building. And as it is, as it stands now, the rest, the lower floor is not leased out, and every time I go there, there's a parking problem, which is, in a way, it's a good thing to have in that part of town, right? You know, that's kind of what we wanted, in a way. It shows progress. But on the other hand, whatever the solution was for the parking there, I, my empirical evidence is it's not working, because, like I say, there's, it's not even 99% leased out, and, or it's only 1% leased out, and yet you've already got a parking issue in that area. Yeah, one unit leased out, and you got a parking issue down there already. Is that right? Yeah. So anyways, carry on. I think we're, we're good. Thank you.
Okay.
And we've got two, two more of these guys. This is taking quite a bit more time than we expected, I'm sure. We thought we'd be done with this with the early start at 5:00. But here we are with Mr. Shields. Is he here on the noise issue? And then the last one is going to be Mr. Krasnov on toxic materials. Never thought I'd be talking about toxic materials at quarter to 11:00.
Where's my start? Good evening, Council. My name is Chris Shields. I am a senior scientist with Atkins. I worked on the noise analysis after the EIR was already submitted. I came in during the response to comments and worked on looking at some of the noise reflection issues. So I'll try to move through this kind of quickly. A lot of folks have already seen this presentation. We do know that noise is influenced by many factors, beyond the individual hearing capacity, but also the frequency and duration of the noise source, and any kind of meteorol, meteorology conditions, your wind, humidity, or temperature, they all have effects on how noise is perceived by individuals. Here's some typical A-weighted noise levels. As you can see, a jet takeoff at 200 feet, at 120 dB, that will create damage to your eardrum, and light traffic, which we find in the area of this, in these streets right here in the vicinity, at about 50 dB. So back in March 2006, Illenworth and Rodkin conducted their first noise measurements for this project. And here are the results. Some of the, some of the noise, some of the measurements were taken in a little too close to the track for, for the way I would, I would perform the measurements. But he just gives us an idea that they were measured, you know, over 70 dB in, adjacent to the railroad tracks. So in December of 2011, Atkins was asked to come out and do some additional measurements. We took a measurement in the first, in the first backyard of a residential use adjacent to the track, and we measured just, we can say 77, might as well round that up, 76.9, 77 dB. Then we went back to 650 feet, and then also did another long-term measurement, and we, we found that we measured 58.9, or if you want to, 59 dB. Now, what this is, is this is a 24-hour measurement. This is literally putting a noise, a noise meter out in the yard, setting it, walking away, and then coming back 24 hours later to find out what, what the noise energy was at that spot for the entire 24-hour period. The noise meter was also, also programmed to collect individual noise train data, so there was a trigger programmed on the meter so that if, if the train hit a certain noise level for a certain amount of duration, it would create another file, a data file, so that you can go back, pull down that data, and count the number of trains that actually went by during that day. Or, and that's, that's the attempt. You know, you try to pick a spot that is very low in ambient noise levels or aren't any intrusive noise, you know, events that could, that could influence your noise measurements. So you really want to find an area that, that has, you know, no dogs barking, light traffic, if possible. Sometimes it's not, that's not easy. No intrusive impulse noises, say, from any kind of light industrial uses. So basically, you just want to find a nice, low ambient noise level, and then, and then also not have any too much background noise that you'll have to decipher what you've actually measured. So then, I'm talking, in addition to the, the long-term noise measurements, we also did short-term measurements at various distances from the track. We tried to do at least an hour at each location. Okay? What this does is it provides us the information on how, how noise is moving through that, that neighborhood. What we found is that, right adjacent to the tracks, you had full exposure to the trains, and we were, we were estimating about 77 dB. That's also validated by the initial 24-hour measurement we took adjacent to the. That's also validated by the initial 24-hour measurement we took adjacent to the track, which was 76.9. And then as we move away from the tracks, we see that the noise continues rather quickly. There's a lot of interference with existing residential structures, and, and that is what I determined was creating, was causing a lot of noise reduction as you move further east into, into the neighborhood. And I wanted, I brought this, this is from your general plan, I brought this graphic in to help illustrate what we're talking about. As you can see, here's a railroad track, and if, if we take a look at this, the noise levels stay really close to the tracks themselves. They don't spread out like we see here along 101. So this is, this is traffic noise that's, that's actually polluting further into your, into your community than the train noise itself. However, the train noise is more distinctive. I will grant you that. It's, it's a distinct noise event. Everyone can tell when a train's coming. Traffic tends to, tends to drown itself out. It tends to become more of an oceanic kind of, you know, ebb and flow. That's a lot of times, people describe it as traffic being, sounding like seashore, crashing waves and whatnot. Trying to correlate it to something. Appreciate.
A really loud seashore.
Yeah, so for the standards we have, CEQA, they, they ask for, they go through exposure to, or generation of noise levels that is considered substantial. They don't actually put a numeric number on it. They leave that for the analysts to determine. Through studies that FICON has conducted, FICON is, was a body that did a lot of, of brochure, sent out, give me a second here, they sent a lot of pamphlets and questionnaires to folks in airport areas, asking them how they reacted to the noise, the noise and the difference in noise levels. And then from that, they were able, they were able to determine that if you're in a noise, in a noise, in existing noise environment of 60 dB or less, an increase of, of 3 dB is considered significant. If you're in a noise environment of 65 to 70 dB, an increase of noise of about 1.5 dB can be considered significant. Anything, if you're in a, in a really low ambient noise level, say 55 dB, they, they also then decided that a 5 dB increase would be considered, that's the significant point for lower ambient noise levels, when, when there is an introduction of, of other noise sources that generate a 5 dB difference in overall noise levels. And so for this project, we used a 3 dB difference. We already have, we have existing noise levels, as we saw, between 70 and 56 dB. So we used a 3 dB difference for our significance threshold. This also falls in line with the City of San Carlos. Your noise element actually has the same, same kind of standards, a 3 dB increase for noise environments that are already, that already exceed the standard, and then a 5 dB increase for noise environments that are under the standard. We also applied the FTA, the Federal Transit Administration standards. They, they have a sliding scale. It's a bit more rigorous, and it's not as conservative, or just more conservative than the CEQA or the City of San Carlos noise element. And so when you have a higher noise level, you are only allowed a smaller increase. Lower noise level is a larger increase before it creates an impact. For instance, if you're in an environment where your noise level is sitting around 45, and you have a project that brings in a noise level of 52, the combined noise level would be about 53, okay? But that's actually an 8 dB increase from your existing, existing noise level. So they're saying that's, that's the loud increment, increase from a, from a project. When you've got lower noise levels, you can have a larger increase. Conversely, down here, if you've got a noise environment, it's already, already sitting around 70, basically, a 1 dB increase in that environment is considered an impact. So it's, it's really restrictive. It's the most conservative way to, to, to actually analyze rail noise. Now again, this, this was set up and devised just for rail projects. So in our impact analysis, we just looked at impacts from the project, and we also were mostly concerned with the impacts from the project onto the existing and adjacent One of the, I was asked to bring a graphic for reflective noise. Now, I went through, and I went through every manual, federal rail authority, the Caltrans, the Federal Transit, Transit Administration, they don't have a graphic, let alone a discussion on noise reflection. This is the best example that I could get without hand drawing it. I needed, I needed to bring something that I didn't create so that had a little bit more meat. So what we're seeing here is that when you have, when you have a surface and a noise source, obviously, your, your noise source is going past this, this surface, and it's, it's throwing noise towards that surface, reflecting back into the source itself, or possibly going above the actual surface that it's interacting with. Now, obviously, there's many more ways for, that this noise source is generating, and this is very simplified. But, but what it does kind of illustrate is that not all of that noise is going to be hitting that surface and reflecting directly back onto, onto receptors on the far side, on the, on the opposite side of that noise source. There's going to be some bouncing in between the, the surface and the noise source, and what we call, it'll get trapped in there, have like more of an urban canyon effect. But basically, and also too, that noise is then not even interacting with the surface at all, and it's going past the surface and it's not reflecting one bit. So it's just, this is a real simplified illustration, but it, it kind of serves its purpose a bit here. So Caltrans took, they took a, quite a bit of a good look at this. They had, most recently down in Brentwood, California, they had quite a few residents complain that one of the noise walls they put in to, to reduce highway noise was actually reflecting noise into their neighborhoods and, and causing an impact. Caltrans spent quite a bit of time studying that, and, and they did not find an increase larger than 2 dB due to reflective surfaces. They found that most of the time that the increase in noise levels was due to either wind, the change in wind direction, the change, a change in, in temperature or humidity. All right, so reflective noise, what we, we wanted to be as conservative as possible with this, with this one particular issue. However, so when you're looking at it, not all the acoustic energy is actually reflected back. That's one thing that, that we ignored. We assumed that all the energy was being reflected back, back, back past the source and onto the G, the greater, greater, the GESC, the greater, the great, help me out, guys. Thank you. Great East San Carlos community. So basically, you know, like I said, we took, we assumed that, and it was all perfectly reflecting back onto, onto the community, and the only thing we accounted for was the distance from the train to the proposed facade, back from that proposed facade into the community. And we did not find a greater increase of more than 1 dB, 1 to 2 dB. So these are the, the results that we came across. Again, the only thing we accounted for was the actual distance that the, the noise would have traveled, not accounting for any kind of interference with surfaces, and, and not accounting for any loss due to other interaction with the train itself. I kind of jumped here. Let's go back up. And so what causes the reflective sources? So if you, if we think back to, to the visuals that we were looking at, the visual slides, where they were taking the mass of the buildings, and it had just the big gray block, and it didn't create, it didn't show any of the textures, any of the setbacks, that's the way we looked at this. We looked at it as a big block, and we didn't, we didn't take into any account the percentage of noise that would not actually reflect back due to hitting the surfaces, or hitting, hitting the hallway, the interior hallways, or, or even accounting for the extra distances and additional setbacks as you moved higher, as you moved up to the floors. So we really took the most conservative approach we could. And what, what that, if you, if you think back about the, the block models that we saw, it was a nice, long, flat surface with no breaks in it whatsoever, and that, that's, that's going to create, create what, you know, the, the kind of environment you need for good noise reflections. However, what we're finding, what minimizes the, the noise reflection is going to be your porous surfaces, your wood, your soft surfaces, your concretes and your bricks, those obviously aren't as porous. There are some cinder blocks that have been designed for noise reduction. They actually have a gap, you know how cinder blocks are hollow, there's a gap, and they actually, we're in the center, and the noise gets channeled into those, into the hollowness of the cinder block and bounces around. So there are other, there are materials that are designed for reducing noise that, that would be considered normally hard, but are effective. And then again, breaks in the surface, noise absorbent materials, and then your evergreen shrubbery, if, if you're going to try to use any kind of vegetation. You don't want, really want any kind of perennials, anything that's going to drop leaves. You want something that's going to keep its cover year-round. And so like we said, we analyzed noise to be perfectly reflective for this project. We used, used the measured SELs. We didn't, we didn't do a model. We actually went out and took the measured SELs. We took the noise levels that we measured in the field, in the community, and we applied those noise levels to do the analysis. So it's not like we, you know, some, some people think, well, you sit down with a model, you have a couple assumptions, you plug in some numbers, you hit enter, and you get a number. You can do that, but then you don't get, you're not accounting for what's on the ground. And so direct measurement of the source is the best way to, to measure and then predict noise in the future, especially when you're talking about noise reflection. We're not talking about increasing the number of trains. So it's, that, for me, that, that was the best and direct, best result, and it's going to be more accurate than modeling, than sitting on a, in a model and just making assumptions. So yeah, as I said earlier, we didn't find anything other than a, a 1 dB increase. Again, this is only accounting for distance, just accounting for distance, assuming that all the noise is reflecting back and, and entering into the community. And I can take questions. I did go as fast as I could, being time considerate. Do I have, I'm sure there's a question or two?
Any questions?
I've got one. Thank you, Mr. Shields.
You're welcome.
May sound like a crazy question, but supposing I lived across the street from the project and I installed thermal windows, is there a way to measure the impact or the reduction in the impact?
Sure, sure. What you could do is you, you could do an exterior to interior noise, exterior to interior testing. What that entails is taking a speaker, an auditorium speaker, and blasting, blasting a pink noise source at 100 dB into your, onto that facade, and you'd measure it interior, you'd measure inside the facade and outside the facade, and that'll tell you what the existing facade is doing for the interior, to extra to interior reduction. And then when you upgrade your windows, you can do it again, and you go, oh wow, that window gave me an extra 10 dB, or 5 dB, or whatever, whatever you were, you were designed to do, yeah. But yes, you can test for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions down here?
I actually have several, but to prevent Mr. Grisilli from, you know, assaulting me, I'm only going to ask one.
I'm not going to assault her. We're going to be, we're going to be here all night.
No, 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 we're done at 11:00.
We're not done at 11:00. People haven't talked yet. We're going to listen to every one of them, because that's what we're here for.
The, one quick question I had is, when I looked at the speeds of the trains listed in the table, and you had it up there a little bit earlier, they struck me as low, given the existence of things like the BB bullet service. So either the trains slowed down a lot more coming through the station than I guess they, I thought they did, or I don't know what.
Well, I think, I wonder if you're, if you're confusing the initial analysis that was in the EIR. The EIR does report the trains coming in at very low speeds.
Okay.
10, 15 miles an hour. So again, that was another concern of mine when I reviewed this, reviewed the information, and I'm like, well, that doesn't quite sound right to me.
Right.
So I, I actually, during my observations, I observed them at up to 35 and 40 miles an hour, and I, and those, those measurements are of those trains.
Oh, okay. I, I didn't say anything higher than 30 on your, your chart, but.
Oh, okay, yeah. And again, these were me standing there doing approximations, but there was definitely a difference. We did have trains that stopped at the station, then accelerated, and we had trains that went right through the station.
Right.
So never slowed down.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, that's another reason why direct measurement of the source is the best way.
Any other questions? All right. I think what we're going to have time for here is perhaps Mr. Krasnov, is he here? And can you do a presentation in about 10 minutes, you think? I will certainly do my best. Okay. Because in contrast to what the vice mayor said, if, if the folks are okay with this, what I'd like to do is end tonight at 11:00, if that's okay with everybody. I think we'd all like to go home. That gives us a clean break. We can continue the public hearing to another meeting, and give everybody a, a fresh start to come back fresh and early in a meeting, and we'll, we'll get to the public's comments, and we'll be fresh and be able to listen to you a lot better than trying to carry on tonight until midnight and that sort of thing. Plus, I noticed, you know, a lot of people here earlier wanted to speak and already left, so. All right, there you go.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Peter Krasnov with West Environmental. We've been working on, we typically call it environmental, but in this context, we'll call it the toxics investigation, and development of a mitigation plan in coordination with the California Environmental Protection Agency. So our scope goes back to pretty much a forensic analysis of the history and uses of the subject property, trying to figure out what sort of chemicals were used there, reviewing agency files, building permits, doing a complete analysis. We also wanted to look at the geology and hydrogeology, because that controls how the contaminants and chemicals will move in the environment. We went through and compiled existing sampling data, because there's been, as I'll get into very quickly here, a number of gas stations, other uses that have been investigated over the years. We took a look at the existing data, coordinated with the regulatory agency that's overseeing this project, went in and did a data gap investigation to make sure we had a complete data set, reviewed that with the regulators, and developed a mitigation plan. Historical uses, and folks in this community be familiar with these, there's a number of gas stations, some of them dating back to the 50s and 60s, number of car washes, historical railroad spur that's there towards the Holly Street end, landscape nursery down towards the southern end of the project, lumberyard storage, a couple of automobile sales and services. Based on those particular uses, we're able to identify potential chemicals that could be there. Yes.
You left out Wild Bill's Donuts.
It's not one that really hits the environmental list, but maybe has other health effects.
You don't know Wild Bill's Donuts?
Yes. So we focus on petroleum hydrocarbons, sort of related to donuts, solvents used in automobile repair and service, heavy metals associated with historical rail use, as well as automobile repair. So we mapped out all the historical site uses, gas stations down here, lumber storage, automobile dealership here, another dealership there. I don't think I have to reorient this map. Everyone's sort of getting used to this orientation with Holly Street right there. Looking at the southern end of the project, two gas stations, I don't know if folks here remember both of those, but we have a couple of gas stations there, as well as the former nursery went back to the 1920s. We then went through and compiled, looked at the historical data before we got involved, and there were over 60 borings that had been already advanced, 69 soil samples, so it was a good database to start from, 22 groundwater samples, which is, when you look at the map in a second, you'll understand, we have a very good database. And basically, what was found there were petroleum hydrocarbons. That's basically diesel, gasoline, some related volatile organic compounds related to gasoline, xylans being the one that we found at the highest concentration. This is a normal constituent of gasoline every time you go to fill up your car. It's a non-carcinogenic compound, it's used a lot in paints, it's got a fairly familiar odor. So we went and designed an investigation to close these data gaps. We advanced 53 more soil borings on top of the existing 60 were there, so we've now got over 100. We collected 67 additional samples, both of soil, solid soil media, soil vapors, chemicals that could be trans, moving through the actual particles of soil, and groundwater, because we need to look at groundwater resources. We analyzed for the same range of constituents that had been investigated before, which is primarily petroleum hydrocarbons, these volatile organics, and the heavy metals, and exactly what we found. We found more gasoline and diesel, we found some volatile organics. We did not actually find the heavy metals at concentrations above background. I know that during the Planning Commission discussions, there were questions about that. These are actually some of the lowest background concentrations we've seen in our investigations throughout Northern California. We did find some groundwater contaminants. These are PCE, which is a dry cleaner solvent. There's a couple of dry cleaners that are located up gradient, not particularly high concentrations, but we did find them, and we found petroleum hydrocarbons associated with the gas stations. This is a plot for the northern end of the soil samples. Not going to go through the individual data points, but this particular exhibit, I believe, is, you know, illustrates that we've got a lot of sample points in order to form some conclusions here. So this is a pretty robust data. So this is a pretty robust data set. We have some concentrations of TPH that are up in the 1,000 part per million range. We'll discuss how we'll deal with those. And on the southern end, once again, finding contaminants associated with the gas stations, but a very robust data set. So no data gaps left when we were done our investigation. This is a summary of the soil gas and groundwater samples. Those were just the soil media. So as we're going down in, towards groundwater and collecting soil vapor, once again, the north end of the project and the southern end of the project, all the way down to compiling data from other gas stations, looking at what's moving on to the site, up gradient, as well as what's in soil at the site now. We take that data, and we basically prepare the risk evaluation. We looked at all the potential receptors for the site use, that's future residents, future commercial workers, we looked at construction workers, which actually turned out to be one of the drivers here. We looked at the community. Are there chemicals that during the actual excavation work could be released into the atmosphere and be a problem? And we also looked at groundwater protection. That's a requirement that we're dealing with the regulatory agencies. You've got to make sure whatever you leave behind protects the resources of the state of California. We compared these to the most conservative numbers. They're called environmental screening levels. These are levels, basically, if you're below them, you don't have a problem. If you're above them, doesn't necessarily mean there's a problem, but you might have to do additional studies and do additional work. We use those as our cleanup goals on this site. That's, those are the criteria that we work with the regulators on. They're very conservative. We developed what's called a site management plan of how we're going to deal with the materials in the soil, soil gas and groundwater. As it turns out, there's nothing in the soil gas that's a problem. There are contaminants in groundwater that are a potential problem that we have to mitigate.
We need a motion for about 10 more minutes, I think.
Okay.
Can we do that? So moved? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry on.
So what we've developed is a mitigation plan that's been submitted, this is to the California Environmental Protection Agency's Regional Water Quality Control Board. They oversee both the San Mateo County environmental health and numerous projects throughout this area. We're going to remove the diesel contaminated soil. That's the material that turns out, that is, the material that's present above these screening levels, is part of the overall work on the project. What we've mapped out on here are the actual footprint excavations associated with the site, and we've identified some additional excavations, very little, to deal with some of the contaminated areas, where we're going to actually step out from the footprint excavation for the proposed project, to take in some additional areas where there's some contamination left over from the previous service stations. Through that program, we will have trained hazardous waste certified contractors out there. We'll have a site-specific health and safety plan that addresses both the construction workers, as well as the community. We'll have site access controls to keep the community from being exposed during the actual excavation work. We'll have air monitoring requirements. This is also, as I'll get into additional regulatory agencies overseeing this. We have real-time action levels that are set at half the thresholds, so that if we see that we're getting either dust or vapors at concentrations that could be a problem, we stop the contractor from work. We have them modify their work practices, implement additional engineering controls, whether it's some sort of dust control, or we use some sort of odor suppressant in case there's vapors that are being released. We'll be implementing stormwater control measures. Once again, this is a project that will fall under state permitting requirements for stormwater, and that's part of the program. Because some of the excavations will get close to groundwater, we also have a groundwater management plan, should we actually encounter groundwater. There's a complete requirement in there for how the contractor will remove, store, treat, and dispose any groundwater that's encountered. We also have a contingency plan to deal with something that we find that we didn't find with all those 120 holes that we have out there, that if, you know, we run across something that wasn't previously characterized, we have very specific protocols that we've worked out with the regulatory agencies to implement. Through all this, we'll be collecting data to document this to the state agencies, demonstrating what we found, how we left it when we were done. The agencies that we'll be coordinating with and that provide oversight for this program, the primary lead agency is this, is the California Regional Water Quality Control Board, located over in Oakland. We've been working with them on this project since 2009. They're familiar with the data. They have reviewed, approved the scope of work that we have outlined here. They've outlined very specific requirements of what, you know, is included in the plan, including their notification three days before we begin work, so that they can be out there to make sure that things are being implemented in accordance with the plan that's been submitted. We also have to coordinate, excuse me, with the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, because we're dealing with petroleum hydrocarbons and vapors, as well as San Mateo County environmental health, that issues some permits associated with this work. Tried to do my best to finish before 11:00. In summary, what we have is a very well-characterized site with very specific requirements and an implementation plan that's detailed in a relatively thick document that has been incorporated into this EIR process. Any questions?
Any questions? I just have one quick one. I remember when we did the Palo Alto Medical Foundation cleanup out there, they did it to, I believe it was residential standards, because those are the highest. I assume here, because it's mixed use, that's just a requirement straight off the bat.
Absolutely. That's the conservative screening levels. Interestingly enough, it's not the human health that's actually driving this cleanup, it's the groundwater protection. So we're even one step more conservative than the residential exposure.
Okay, very good. Any other, any questions then? All right, seeing none, we're, we're through with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rubens.
The next available city council meeting for this would be January 14th, so what you want to do is continue the public hearing to January 14th for further.
Any motion for that, Mr. Rubens?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing until January 14th.
Do we need a roll call or not, or just all in favor?
All in favor, okay.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.